All right, good evening, everyone. We're going to call to order the November 26th meeting of the Columbus City Council. We're so glad to have you with us this evening. Want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. I hope everybody is going to enjoy what may well be a short week for some, I know, and hopefully enjoy some family and friends and certainly all the things we have to be thankful for in this community and beyond. Also want to recognize our counselor, Red McDaniel's not with us this evening. He's a little under the weather, but he wanted me to let you all know that he lost probably his dearest friend last night and probably a good friend to many of you all in the crowd, Bobby Rowe, passed last night. And so if you all could please keep that family in your prayers and certainly the friends. There's many people mourning today. He was certainly a long time contributor to this community and we have a lot to be thankful for, as I said, for many of our citizens that help us, and Mr. Rowe was one of them. So again, we're thanking of you, to the Rowe family and to Counselor McDaniel. And with that, it's always a good time to start off with an invocation. And we want to call Chaplain Hall forward to provide us with the invocation this evening, consistent with his faith tradition. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Thompson, City Council. It's an honor to be here and to be able to pray the Lord's blessings upon this meeting and would like to thank y'all, us officers. A lot of times people just stop us on the street and thank us for different things, and we don't feel worthy either, but like to thank y'all for what y'all do too, because a lot of times people, a lot of people think they can do the job until they get, you know, a little taste of it. But with that, let's go before the Lord in prayer. Father God, we do thank you, Lord, for your blessings. We thank you, Lord, for this season of Thanksgiving, Lord, and we thank you, Lord, for all the things that you have done throughout this year in this great city. And Lord, I thank you that even tonight, Lord, that you bless each and every council member, Lord God, and help them in making decisions this evening. And every person that's represented here tonight, Lord, we thank you. And Lord, we do say a special prayer for the Rowe family, Lord. Bless them and comfort them during this time of loss and also for Councilman McDaniel, Lord. Just have your way in this meeting and we give you the praise in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Chaplain Hall. Thank you so much and for your kind words. And now we have a special treat. We have our friends from Girls, Inc. have come back to help lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and we're going to ask them to come forward and stand in front of the clerk's desk and ask if you all will stand and join them in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to Republicans, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with whose name is the law. All right. Excellent job. You guys did really good. Now, give us your name and tell us how old you are.
My name is Lily Reeves and I'm seven.
Seven. Okay, let's make sure the mic's on. Can you, Sandra, check that real quick? Okay, just one more time, real loud, so we can hear.
My name is Lily Reeves and I'm seven.
Wonderful.
My name is Akira Reese and I'm nine years old.
My name is Heavenly and I'm six years old.
My name is Gabrielle and I'm seven years old.
My name is Miracle Gamble and I'm nine years old.
My name is Takayla Reese and I'm seven years old.
My name is Elizabeth Reese and I am 10 years old.
All right, and who do you have with you tonight?
Victoria Mouchon.
Deb Whalen.
Well, thank you. Are there, is there any family or friends that have come? Well, thank you all for being with us. You did a great job and we hope you'll come back again soon. Let's give them another round of applause. And hope you all have a really great Thanksgiving. All right, well, we have a full agenda this evening. We're going to try to move along as expeditiously as possible, but we want to bring forward on the mayor's agenda, the Director of Crime Prevention, Mr. Seth Grant, with some proposed grants. I'm sorry, Seth Brown.
I've been called a lot-
Seth Brown is here to present grants.
I've been called a lot worse, Mayor.
Well, actually, there is a well-known photographer who's now left Columbus named Seth Grant, who is a good friend of mine. And that's why I've called you Seth Grant on more than one occasion, so I apologize. But Seth Brown is here to talk with us about some grants. How about that? All right, Seth?
Um, do I-
Oh, excuse me. Counselor Thomas.
I'm sorry, before Seth starts, as he goes through this list, I would like to ask if he would let us know of the ones that he's bringing forth tonight, are they currently recipients of a grant, and when will this grant cycle for each one of these start? If you'd just include that in his presentation rather than stopping him at everyone and asking-
I can do that, yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, hold on, we've got Mayor Pro Tem, too.
Also Seth, if by chance you can let us know how many individuals each grant is supposed to impact.
I did, I put that on this sheet of paper, Mayor Pro Tem, on my notes, as I went through.
Okay, because I couldn't find it in here.
It's, I try to condense what I give y'all, because it's so much information, I try to keep y'all from getting bogged down with it, but I've got it here.
Okay.
All right, great. And with that, Seth, if you want to go ahead and get started, I'm sure there'll be questions along the way.
The first grant is a current recipient of crime prevention funds, the Boxwood Parks and Rec Center. And Counselor Thomas, I don't know, the ones that we fund through that are city entities, they don't get like a regular payment. They get as they submit bills, so I don't even know how much is left on that at this point. I came back to y'all, I guess about six months ago, and they had $47,000 left, and they have spent very little of that in the meantime, so I would assume they've got somewhere in that general area of those funds left. Those funds are used for personnel and also materials.
Counselor Thomas?
If I might-
Yes, ma'am.
I guess my interest more is, and this grant will start on September, on January the 1st, or this grant will start on whatever-
Yes, ma'am.
The actual payout is not, that is not part of my concern at this time.
Right, right. And again, that, those programs are really different from like the FAST program or something else, where they get a monthly check and I evaluate them as we go. Boxwood, as y'all know, was a vacant center. It'd been vacant for, I think, 12 years, had been utilized by a local nonprofit for utilization through the lost infrastructure funds. We went in and rehabbed that, and our funds went in and put the employees in, the materials such as, you know, the arts and craft stuff, the science, the books, those kind of things. We did those and also programs that are currently being involved. It's actually been active since the first, well, probably the end of March was the actual ribbon cutting. They've seen a 10% reduction in crime overall in that beat, which is 19. And those are all crimes combined. If you go to that area, you have, there's a significant impact as far as talking to the individuals there, the children, seeing the involvement, the programs are seeing. So we've seen a tremendous impact in just that one little area, which is kind of like a horseshoe-shaped area outside of Enoch, which was plagued with a lot of drug activity. They've also been the site of numerous community-type programs. We've had several churches utilize that area for rallies, we, just all kinds of stuff. They're also now have started a soccer program. One of the churches has partnered with Parks and Rec and they've started a soccer program and utilized that field. So there's been a huge impact of that area under this. The grant that they're asking for is $80,000, but total expenses for that rec center is As far as impact, as Mayor Pro Tem asked, they probably hit somewhere around 40 to 50 kids per week is what they're seeing. Now, that's juveniles. They hit a lot more in adults as far as utilization of the area. The day that I went there, there was probably 100 and some odd people outside doing a rally. I went another time, there was somewhere around 50 some odd. Chris Brown, who's here, we went to a rally together that was an anti-drug rally. So it's, the impact that you're seeing with the children is 40 to 50 on a weekday, but it's much larger as far as utilization throughout the time.
Counselor Barnes?
I'd just like to add on to what, as you, prior to this opening, as you saw, that's an area of some very good established families. It's had a small element, and our concern, the mayor's concern, when we had discussions about a year prior, was the fact of having something there that would be a gathering point for not only the many small children, but also the teenagers.
Yes, sir.
And I've done it going on numerous occasions. And what is significant, St. Thomas Episcopal Church has partnered, and they're doing a soccer program there, and they're also doing tutoring and things like that. So as we had envisioned, Mayor, in our discussions and with Seth, that all they needed to have was a place, which we provided for them, and the whole community is partnering, and they were just waiting for something like this. So this has been a Godsend, really, as, when you went there, how many did you see there? You know, something about 50?
Oh, yeah, it was easily. When I left and the program had just kind of started, because I had to get to another event, there were 50 folks there. They had a barbecue and all kind of stuff, and it was an anti-drug, anti-violence-
Exactly.
-gang rally kind of thing.
It's a tutoring for the children as well there.
Yeah, they're also doing numerous tutoring programs and things like that. They've also reached out to the community, I think through Columbus High and some others, to bring high school kids in for tutoring aspects and things like that.
Seth, I hate, you know, of course you couldn't spend all that much time on each one of them, I guess, given the time constraints, but I wish we had shown pictures of the before and after. One thing that they've done at the rec center was partner with people in the community to paint two murals on the outside, and they used the kids to paint them. And there's not been, when that area did have a high level of vandalism, you couldn't do anything without that building being vandalized, and now it hadn't been touched. And there are those handprints of the kids making flowers, and it's just really beautiful and to think that now the community takes pride in it and no vandalism, so, but. Mayor Pro Tem?
And for the truth to be known, I grew up in East Carver High, two blocks from the rec center. We didn't have a rec center at that time, but I also saw over the years, because I go down there quite often, how the neighborhood went down, because there was a lot of vandalism in the neighborhood.
Yes, ma'am.
And it has made a big difference, especially to the elderly citizens, because now they can walk up to the rec center and do programs, and that makes a world of difference. But the real truth of why the rec center was closed originally was because not this necessarily, this council, some of us were here. We decided to go with the big super center concepts and we closed out the individual centers in the neighborhoods. And at that time, we thought it would work better, because we could put more money into it, but sometimes hindsight is better than foresight.
Yes, ma'am. It is, it has turned into a, as we always said, a bright shining star in that area that was suffering so much.
Well, it also shows what putting crime prevention funds in certain programs can do.
Yes, ma'am.
Good. Counselor Thomas?
If I recall, when we first funded this program from the crime prevention programs, from the crime prevention monies, it was, as the Mayor Pro Tem said, to, in order to put money in to help get it kick-started, if you will. My, one of my questions is, and I don't know Seth, if you're the person to answer, perhaps the city manager would be the person, is there a, some kind of a schedule so that the operations of this rec center move from the crime prevention budget to the Parks and Rec budget, where all of the other rec center budget money comes from? I don't want anybody to get the idea that I don't want us to fund Boxwood. I think this is a terrific program. My concern is, though, that this was not supposed to be a forevermore thing. And so I guess my question to the city manager or to whomever is, is it, is it on a path to move, to be, to become funded in the same way, I don't know, some of the others are to be funded?
I can speak for our board. Dr. Wright says we will not fund it after this year. His goal for our board is to, as you said, we only funded it for half a year the last time. It was not for a full year. And he felt, and the board did, felt that we needed to give them more time to get established, and that's where this next year came from. His goal is, and the board's, is to look at the other two, as some of y'all had said and Mayor Tomlinson had said, look at those other two and which one's the most needed next, and then we go do it the same way we did this one. So he has already told me to talk to Dr. Worsley, and I think he has spoken to Dr. Worsley, that they would not fund this program again, because they wanted it to roll into the general budget.
Madam Mayor and to Counselor Thomas, I don't have to explain the economic times and the challenges that we've gone through with city budgets in. Because Parks and Recreation, Public Works are the larger departments, they've taken the greatest hits. And if times get better and sales taxes up and the tax digest is up, I'm sure we could transition it from crime prevention back to the general fund. How long or when that will be, I simply can't say. And so it is a priority, I know, to us to have Boxwood and neighborhood facilities. It's just a matter of the money and where we set the priorities. And so eventually, when the, when things get right, I'm sure we'll be able to transition, but for now, crime prevention is the ideal place to support it. And I just heard what Seth Brown said, but I hope that if times don't get better sooner than later, that even crime prevention will rethink that decision based on the results that we are realizing out of Boxwood. So, but we don't know just yet.
I guess, given what Seth has said to us, my response to you, Mr. City Manager, is don't forget that this needs to be in that mix. And when you're, when you're putting together budgets, say, remember Boxwood. We can't forget Boxwood, because I would not want them to lose the momentum that they currently have. I think that needs to continue. But I also would like to see them, as soon as possible, whenever that is, transferred back into the general fund.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
And in all reality, it's up to this council what happens to Boxwood, what funds they come out of. Because I'm gonna tell you, you either pay now or you pay later. It's gonna come out of one place, one way or the other, whether it's in more police patrol in the area, or whether it's a facility that somebody can do something with. So we can sit here and think that nothing's gonna change, but it's pay now or pay later.
Yes, ma'am.
Let's see. Counselor Barnes?
There is going to be a quick comment, but I'm glad you said, what you said, to answer that, that decision lies with this council, with this council here.
Definitely.
Respecting people's opinions and what they say, but we all know that everything, the decision for that, because we up here on this council are the elected representatives of the citizens. And so being duly elected, those decisions come here. And we do have committees and people that, you know, that we rely on and we take into consideration their judgment, but that decision, as the city manager alluded to, that lays with, and Mayor Pro Tem, I'm glad that you mentioned, lays with this council. Because we are all representatives of the taxpayers whom we receive the monies from.
That's right.
See, the monies are not, it's the taxpayers. And whatever in our opinion that we hear from our constituents, for the good of them, that's how we will so vote. So I just wanted to touch on that. Thank you.
Yes, sir. The next one is the Columbus Tech Program, which is, it's GDAT is what it's called, and it's called Giving Deserving Others a Chance, which I don't know how GDAT fits in there, but it's, it's got more to it than that. Anyway, there's, this, this is also, Counselor Thomas, a program that we have funded in the past, but has currently fallen off of that cycle. I think July was the last check I cut for Columbus Tech. They're reapplying for continued funding. They're actually, they have really not increased their funding, but they've increased their outreach. Now, how Jamie Lloyd is doing it, I'm not real sure. I think he's working with the community more to pull in more resources, but he's never asked for more money from us. Matter of fact, it's, we're giving them, if this was approved, it'd be less money than last year. But it's $80,000. It would serve 93 participants. It's, as y'all know, it's a multi-level reentry program, and their success rate is around 80%. It fluctuates a little bit, but it's kind of hovering between that 75 to 80% as far as hireability. And as I tell people when I speak out in the community, these aren't Burger King jobs. Now, they're not the greatest jobs in the world, but they are a living wage type job, which was one of the criteria that we set going forward. We didn't just want these individuals to have a job, we wanted them to have a living wage job, they could actually at least help take care of their family. Our goal, as you've heard me say before, is to try to get this to the state level. With budget cuts in the state, though, we're struggling with that also. I know that Senator McCune has spoken to me numerous times and wants to take this to the state, but I think they're having issue also with funding, and that's maybe the delay of us getting to speak there. The, any questions on that one, Mayor? The next one is the FAST program. There are representatives from the Family Center here that came to support. The total project expenses for FAST are $247,000. They're asking us for $87,000. They should treat somewhere around 550 individuals, which is children plus families that are impacted, 100-plus at-risk youth. And those of y'all don't know, it's in the Rigdon, the Georgetown, Dawson, Fox Elementary Schools. It's an eight-week cycle. If you've never experienced this, I would encourage y'all to go watch it in action. It's an amazing program that takes the at-risk child and it incorporates their entire family. FAST stands for Family and Schools Together. It takes them and puts them into a family-type situation where they eat together, they have counseling, they have conflict resolution time, game time. There's so many aspects to it, it's hard to even describe it to all of y'all sitting here. It has been wildly successful here in Columbus, but it's been in other places also. I'm gonna give y'all just a few points. They've had a 94% increase in participative families that have graduated from FAST. They've had 100% participative families have shown increased school involvement, and 87% families showed decreased conflict. 87% reported decreased parental-child conflicts, increase in parental-child relationships, 83% demonstrated improved behavior. I mean, the list goes on and on about the increase of the impact that they've had on these children's lives. And these aren't, these are kids that are at-risk youth that are appointed through the school system. They're not just, they're not handpicked. But I would, like I said, I would encourage y'all to go look at that program and see it for yourself. It's hard to describe it on paper. Seeing it in person, you can really understand the impact they're making on children's lives. Okay, the next one is the Adult Drug Court. I know I saw Judge McBride here somewhere. Oh, there he is, I'm sorry. Mr. Love is here also. This is also a program that we have funded in the past, but it's been about two years. The Adult Drug Court and the Mental Health Court, or Mental Health Veterans Court, are kind of going, they're two different grants, but they're kind of in the same realm. As y'all know, our governor said, and I repeat this a million times, we can no longer afford to do business the way we've done it in the past, and that means through incarceration. We have to have programs like the Drug Court, the Juvenile Drug Court, the Mental Health Court, these programs that target these individuals, that have not completely lost their way, that we know that we can save and reduce the recidivism rate of these individuals instead of putting them into an at-risk position. The Drug Court's total budget is $326,588. The grant amount that they're asking for is $75,000. The enrollees participate in an 18-month, five-phase program treatment. They've had a 64% success rate as far as remaining drug-free. They'll treat anywhere from 80 to 100 individuals through this program. I know that this program, as well as Mental Health Court, when I had spoken to Judge Allen when he was still here, they were all trying to find different ways to provide funding outside of us. One of the things that somebody came to me a while back was, they said, you know, well, I'd heard that the state was providing $10 million more towards these court systems, these drug courts and mental health courts. And I said, that's true, but if you talk to Judge Allen, he'll tell you that what happened was, just like any time, when somebody rings the dinner bell, everybody comes running. These other counties started creating these courts. So instead of having an abundance of money to provide to these current courts that were in place, they almost got less money, because these new courts started springing up everywhere. And that's when the courts reapplied with us again for funding to offset this. Since I'm on that one, I'll go to the Mental Health Court. I'm going, that'll be a little bit out of order, but their project expenses are $297,762 and their request is $75,000. They will treat anyone from 120 to 200 participants. They also have a 60% plus success rate. We were very interested in this. That's also, Counselor Thomas, a program that we've funded in the past, but have not in about two years. We were very interested in this one because of post-traumatic stress disorder, and they were steering a lot of this towards the veterans and the rate of incarceration we were seeing among them, because they were self-medicating or they were having post-traumatic stress disorder, those kind of things. So the Veterans Court under Judge Allen had targeted this whole area and had worked extensively with this to try to offset that. So that was one that we really felt would be a huge, make a huge impact on what we were seeing with the numerous amounts of veterans that were coming from Afghanistan and Iraq at this time in our own community. The next one is EDA, which stands for Education is the Answer. Their project expenses are $65,000. Their grant request is for $45,000. This is a program that we've never, it's a brand-new program that we have had exposure to. They've been in existence for, I want to say about a year. They've got a location off of Edgewood, and as y'all know, Edgewood now has closed, and I believe it's the at-risk school, I really don't know what to call it. Mr. Black was here, he could probably tell you exactly what it's called, but it, the more at-risk students, I guess. We felt like with its location and with the, their motivation, what they wanted to do was go after the at-risk student to provide leadership. I wrote all of them down, let's see where I'm at. Leadership skills, study skills, entrepreneurial workshop, financial training workshops, family stabilization efforts, parental support groups, and parent strategy development. It was kind of like an open-door kind of program. Again, this is one of those programs you really can't understand until you walk into it and actually sit in there and talk to them and work with them. It's an open-door kind of program where they allow anybody to come in. The person that runs it is, has a doctorate in counseling. They were funding this out of their own pocket for a year. Matter of fact, the CEO who started it, her husband was in the military, and she would take his entire check and fund this out of her own pocket, and basically she ran out of money. At first, I was a little skeptical, because I thought, God, this sounds like a pie in the sky kind of dream when you're looking at it on paper. I went out and saw the impact they were making with kids, these at-risk kids, and it wasn't a feel-good program, it was more of a get-tough kind of program, to try to help these kids get on their own two feet again, the ones that we thought were gonna be, could be potential issues within the, in the community in the long term. They track these kids along the way. Even after they finish their program, they can continue to come back and work with, the counselors are in the group, and they're doing all kinds of stuff. They also work with age training and sensitivity training as far as groups go. So I mean, it's, again, it's one of those things you really, it's hard to explain on paper, but if you go look at it, you can see the impact they're making in a really rough area town. They've currently got partnerships with the Juvenile Justice System, Muskogee County Tool District, and Girls, Inc. Their current donors in the, or I should say, in the past, have been Carmack Cinemas, Pigly Wiggly, Walmart and Publix. They've seen an 85% reduction in drug activity and violent behavior among the young male- the young males that have been involved in their program. And it's only been a small sampling, it's been thirty-nine men that were there last year. I say, young men that were there last year, but of those, they saw an eighty-five percent reduction in any kind of violent behavior or drug activity. The Chatahoochee Valley Jail Ministry. This one is one of those programs that I just, I can't say enough about, and I know y'all are very knowledgeable of it already. I know that Chaplain Richardson, who is here somewhere, has spoken to y'all many times. This is one of those programs, when I came to y'all, I guess back in May or August, it was August, when I was showing y'all the results, the results of their reduced recidivism even shocked me. I really did not expect it to be that successful. Neil's program is hitting the individuals that just take the test, is decreasing the recidivism rate of, not the ones that pass the GED, the ones that take it and enroll in the classes. It's a thirty percent reduction in recidivism as opposed to no program at all. The program costs forty-seven thousand. They're asking for forty-one-thousand-five-hundred. As y'all know, it's a reentry program, it's a GED. These individuals apply to be in it. It's kind of cut and dry, but it is amazingly successful. Neil provides an opportunity for these individuals to get a GED, so when they come out, they've actually got some hope. As y'all know, he also does the Veterans Dorm, the Fatherhood Dorm, some other programs that have made a huge impact. I think one of the best things that ever happened to Columbus was Chaplain Richardson working with the jail system. I can't say enough about it.
Mayor Pritton?
Seth?
Yes, ma'am.
They're doing other than getting them ready for the GED, aren't they?
They get ready for it, and they take it also. They test for it, you know, to pass it.
Well, the reason I question that is because that comes for a hundred-and-fifteen. Columbus Tech has a program that they work with, I think it's the Literary Alliance, and their program is like on a hundred-and-sixty dollars per student.
And Mayor Pritton, you may be correct, I don't know.
And a hundred-and-fifteen times a hundred-and-sixty only gives you eighteen thousand dollars. So I just asked Neil if he can just get us some more information on that?
I can.
Because I just feel like they're doing more than just preparing them for the GED.
Well, Neil can speak, I mean, if you'd like to come forward and address that question since you're here. It's a forty-one-thousand-five-hundred-dollar grant. Can you tell us a bit about what all is included?
It's both the educational materials, the books, it's also, it's teachers at twenty dollars an hour to recruit teachers. It is the hundred-and-sixty-dollar per student to take all five parts of the test, and we have to bring the testers into the jail, and that's another four hundred dollars to bring them in each month. So our testing fees is really the most brutal part of this. So testing a hundred-and-fifteen people, providing them the books, and ten hours of male instruction, and ten hours of female instruction, plus an additional ten hours of tutoring of men, and ten hours tutoring of women, that's how that budget got there.
Okay, thank you. All right, Councilor Barnes?
And just to add something to that, and you have a very good point, Mayor Pritton, but the hardest thing for someone who's been incarcerated is to get a job. I think I've talked to a number of people, tell them, I done been there, I have done, that has happened to me. And so, when you have someone, and you're on a slippery slope whenever you have to check that box, that if you've ever been locked up, it's hard to get a job. It's even more harder when you don't have a GED. No one, not even fast-food places, are taking anyone without a GED. And this, and last week, one of the gentlemen that the city manager and I are involved in the fatherhood program in the jail called me. He stopped me on the street, three children and a wife, he's been looking for a job. The one thing that they told him, you don't have a GED. I called the chaplain on the phone. Where were you at, Neil? You were out of town?
Yes.
Where were you at?
Charlotte.
He was in Charlotte, and I called him on the phone, and the guy didn't have the money. What is it, sixty-something?
Sixty.
Yes. The guy could take the test because he got pre-tested, but it was the money. He couldn't do it. I called Neil, he was in Carolina. Neil gave me permission. I called there and told him they would take it out of the funds. The boy has taken the test, the boy is employable. To me, that speaks volumes, and that's just one case. And so, to me, that speaks volumes. And to your, what you said, Mayor Pritton, it is, I know, very good at the Columbus Tech. But what, to piggyback on what Neil says, they're bringing the teachers into the jail because they can't let the students go out. And it's just, I just can't, from the standpoint of someone who's been on the receiving end and know what that's like, when you can't get a job because you've been locked up, and you have a family, you know, you don't want a backslide, so anything that you can do to help these individuals. I'm a firm believer, by the way, that if you do the crime, you do the time. But then again, the Lord Himself Almighty forgives us, so when someone has paid their debt, then we need to forgive them and give them an opportunity to get their life together. So that's just my two.
Thank you.
The next one is the Literacy Alliance, and Ms. Michonne is here, who's the director. Their project expenses are a hundred-and-forty-nine-eight-sixty-three, they're asking for a hundred-and-five thousand. This is a program, Mayor Thomas, that we have funded in the past, it's not currently on the funding cycle. They will treat through all of the different aspects of their programs, which is the kindergarten readiness, dictionary project, middle school programs, adult literacy, around four thousand-plus individuals. Y'all are also well-aware of this program. I know that we've had some adult literacy people come and speak. The kindergarten readiness program speaks for itself. The middle school program was something I was completely unfamiliar with until we funded it the last time, which is a tutorial kind of skills program in the summertime. Barbara obviously tries to target those most at-risk, but she turns away nobody, which I thought kind of spoke a lot for the kind of program that they're running there. She rarely sings her praises, but this program is having a massive impact in Columbus. What I've always said is, there's nothing that we do shows a greater correlation than that of literacy rates and crime rates. I mean, I can come in here and bring you volumes and information that state that the literacy rate combined with crime rate are just, they're just paired right alongside each other. So we felt like if any program, this was one that was right up our alley, and we welcomed it when y'all came to us and said, we think this is something that crime prevention needs to look at. So that's that. The next one is Neighborhoods Focus on African-American Youth. First, let me clarify with the title. This program was created in two thousand and four in Atlanta. I don't want y'all to think they're only hitting one specialized group of Columbus. Where Cheryl Bursh, who runs the program, where she was at, it was overwhelmingly predominant juvenile African-American youth in that area. So she called it this, and because it had been known by that name, she continued to keep the name. Well, if you go into her area, and she's in Elizabeth Candy and Warren Williams. If you go into those locations where they're doing these tutorial programs, it's like a melting pot. There's every child of every race, color, and creed are in there. Again, another program that if you look at it on paper, you're thinking, God, this program can't be that good. She had a vision to do this, and started in Atlanta, and then she still drives from Atlanta to Columbus, two hours every, three days a week she comes down, but it's ran five times a week, to run this program, to work with at-risk kids in Elizabeth Candy and Warren Williams. They do study skills. They've also, if they have a child who has a specific area that's suffering, they'll bring in a teacher from one of the schools to specifically target that child with, whether it be science, math, whatever the case is. They have a hundred-plus students enrolled. As I told you, they're in Elizabeth Candy and Warren Williams. Two-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollars is their total budget, they're asking for fifty-five thousand. This is a program that we funded in the past, but it's no longer being funded right now. They operate three to six during the week, Monday through Friday. They work on reading, math skills, homework assistance, conflict resolution, drug awareness, and violence prevention. With this program, they actually saw a reduction in conflict and violent acts among the kids that were enrolled in the program inside the Warren Williams and Elizabeth Candy area. Her goal is obviously to expand this to every area of the housing in Columbus. She doesn't know how she's going to do that, but that's her obvious goal, to do that. We've seen, or she has seen, increase in CRCT scores of every child that's enrolled. She has had no child in her program that has been sent to a tribunal, or has had expulsion or in-school suspension issues. Whereas before, those were some of the most at-risk kids that we had seen in Columbus, and that has made a massive impact in that area.
Seth, we have a question for Mayor Pritton.
Yes, ma'am.
Seth, if you will, take back to your board. One of the issues we've had this budget cycle, well, we were looking at a possible six-million-dollar deficit.
Yes, ma'am.
And when I was looking and reading about the different grants, where it had the travel money in there, we'd cut travel funds out of everybody's budget. So take that back to your board.
I will.
We'll discuss that. It's a good program, but travel, just kind of.
And Mayor Pritton, what I'll say is, I probably need to change that. It needs to be more like a transportation cost. They're not really going anywhere. Matter of fact, we don't fund any trips outside of Muskogee County under our program. If they take a travel, it's like to the Cocoa Space Science Center or whatever. Under her program, it's travel of the kids, like she takes them to the Columbus Museum. They take a trip to that.
Okay.
They do Cocoa Space Science Center, and they do one, I think, it might be the Infancy Museum, but I can't remember. We don't fund any travel outside of Muskogee County.
Okay. Councilor Davis?
Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned something that just struck my thought a little bit.
Yes, sir.
You talked about the lady here with this program, that one day she has a dream or vision of doing what she's doing in all of the public housing around Columbus, and that's great.
Yes.
I commend her for that. But the thought was, I just, you know, I'm looking through here at several of these requests, and it seems to be a lot of them are focused around education.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, and I know that we have a lot of very good organizations within our community that are also doing some of the same things that we're talking about here. I can't tell you who's doing what and where, but the thought of, you know, from an education standpoint and what's being provided from a standpoint of duplication, you know, is something I'm sure your board is keen on and that you're looking at.
Yes, sir.
With all these requests. But when you look at it in general, the question comes to my mind, what are we, are we doing anything? Is the organization, the crime prevention program doing anything to partner with Muskogee County School District or schools to try to address some of these same areas? It seems to me like they're the experts in this area, and that they should maybe be involved, or assist, or help, or maybe we should partner, or the crime prevention program partner with some of our local professionals.
Well, we do have a board member. The requirements of the board are that we have to have a representative from the educational system. It doesn't have to be Muskogee County School District, it can be the university system, it could even be private school, but it's always been Muskogee County School District that has been a representative on that board. That person is actually appointed by the mayor that is sitting at the time. Mayor Wetherington did the first one, and Mayor Thomason did the one that's currently here, which is Mr. Blackwell, who's in the back. So we take direction from him. If he sees an issue within the school system that we may be able to have an impact on, we take direction from him. As you know, the office doesn't run any program. We facilitate programs through funding or even through advice to some extent. Now, I work in the community through community-like organizations and stuff, like the Neighborhood Watch and Association, and even meet with neighborhoods on a regular basis. But as far as programming goes, we don't do any of that active programming. I work a lot with people like Chris Brown, who works with Carver High School and some other schools, to try to figure out what their needs are. And when we hear those needs, when a program comes to us, like some of these, we go, hey, this would fit the need that we're hearing Mr. Blackwell say that's needed at some of these schools, or Chris Brown, or Teddy Reese, or any of these other guys that are giving us feedback. Another program that we fund, the George Apsey Project, which is the local representative is Teddy Reese, he gives us feedback because they do a lot with the school system as far as needs on in-school suspension and expulsion and those kind of things. So I don't know if that answers your question. We're not actively doing anything with the school, but we're working with them through advisement and that kind of stuff.
That answers it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ma'am?
I was just gonna say, appears there's no further questions. Oh, you've got one more, okay. Continue.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought you meant one more question. The last one is Sam Mark Foundation. The project expenses for this program, a hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand-five-hundred. The grant request is fifty thousand. This program is, I know a lot of y'all know about the basketball program they do in the summertime and that. That's not what this is. This is an after-school tutorial program that they started in two thousand and eight, that operated out of Booker T. Washington Apartments and Wilson Apartments. It is now in Shirley B. Winston, Frank Chester, and Wilson Housing. They work with elementary and also high school students. The two elementary they're working with at current are Dawson Elementary and Fox Elementary, and they're doing Carver and Spencer, I think, in the high school. I didn't write that down, I don't know why. They've seen a thirty percent increase in graduation rates among the high school students that they've had an impact on. They've seen a hundred percent pass rate of CRCT in Dawson, and ninety-one percent pass rate in Fox of the kids that have been enrolled in their programs. And Fox, I believe they've got twenty-two kids, and in Dawson, I think it's thirteen, I think. The supplies aspect of this, somebody asked me about the supplies needed for something like this, would be the computer software, the textbooks needed for the reading and math criteria, the, you know, just normal stuff that they're going to be using. Also, they've got staffing of instructor, and then three, or no, there's four tutors, plus some paraprofessionals that work with those kids to help with tutorials.
Councilor Thomas?
Yes, ma'am.
This is a request for fifty thousand dollars, twenty thousand of it for supplies. That seems to me to be an awful lot of supplies. Can you, you said software and?
It's the.
What are they buying for twenty thousand dollars?
The grant stated that it was software for the curriculum and stuff, for the CRC testing. Trina Trice is here, I think. Trina, do you want to speak to that, since you're the expert? Trina actually runs the program for the Sam Mark Foundation. I don't want to say something that's not correct.
Good evening. The supplies that we normally use are based on per-student use, and we have about two-hundred-and-fifty students that are in our programs, from kindergarten all the way through twelfth grade. And normally, that averages about a hundred dollars per child to enroll them in software that can improve their skills in reading and math throughout the school year. So it's for a software program, and that's a per-child cost. And in addition to that, they also have books, books that we use for reading and math. So software, and as well as some activity books.
This is all of the supplies for this program?
Yes, for about two-hundred-and-fifty students. That's what the average cost has been over the last three years that we've run the program. It costs about a hundred or so dollars per child.
Well, you know, I hesitate to do this, but I'm gonna do it anyway, and it may come back to haunt me. I've had two telephone calls about this grant since the article in the paper this morning. And the concern was, why are we funding Sam Mitchell's program? The first person that called said about the basketball program, and I said, as I understand it, it is not the basketball program, it is a tutorial program. Both of these people said to me, and of course, this is two people out of however many. Both of these people said to me, and of course, this is two people out of however many people live in Columbus, Georgia, and read the ledger, said to me, I remember the newspaper article when Sam was in town last summer, and he was palling around with Shaquille O'Neal, can't Shaquille O'Neal give him $50,000? And I said Shaquille O'Neal can probably give him a lot more than $50,000, but that's not the point. I will tell you that these two people that talked to me were irate that we were even considering funding this program because of the connection with Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Upshaw. I don't know that that's a valid concern, but I want you to know that it is a concern, and that it is one, at least, that has been brought to my attention. I do think that $20,000 worth of supplies, and $30,000 in personnel, you know, is a bit much. But I'm not running the program, I don't know what it is. I wanted you to know that. I quite frankly have not decided how I'm going to vote on this particular one, but wanted you to know that.
Thank you.
And as I said, I probably shouldn't have brought this up, but hey, you know, as Pop always says, that's what my constituents have said to me, and so I'm saying it to you.
Okay.
So, you'll be aware.
Okay.
Not so you do anything, but so you'll be aware.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. I was trying to wait till, I don't have any questions with you, I'm sorry. I was trying to wait till Seth Brown completed his presentation.
Okay, all right. We have one more, just in case, I don't know if it was for Trina or not, and then I'll come right back to Counselor Allen. Mayor Protim.
I don't want Trina to leave here thinking that we are ungrateful for Sam and Mark lending their name to a program that's going to help underserved kids. So, you can take that back to me.
I sure will, thank you. Counselor Barnes.
Well, Mayor Protim verbalized for me exactly what I was going to say, for those two individuals to really lend their name. These are two individuals who are products of the community, who could be doing anything, and they're investing in this community, which I think is commendable, very commendable. So, Mayor Protim, you spoke, you said a mouthful. I could say more, but I don't want to hold things up and drag this out more, but I could say volumes about individuals coming back to this community when they don't have to. Sam Mitchell was voted Coach of the Year of the NBA, but yet he's come back, and I'm very well aware of the work that you all are doing. And just one other comment, being that I have a little bully pulpit here, that program where the woman drives down from Atlanta, Seth, and let me give you a kudo. Seth, this gentleman here goes into, he really investigates, and he goes into every place. And something that you brought up, she does, she still drives down from Atlanta for this program, and one of the things that I wanted to jog, the individuals in those communities, in Elizabeth Candy, the people, the parents, the people, when they see people coming down to help, they buy into that, by lending their time and their efforts. A lot of them don't have the money, but they lend their time to assist. And I know you've seen that.
Yes.
So, I just wanted to just bring that in to the mix as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trina.
All right, let's see here. We had Counselor Allen with a question for Seth.
Are you finished with your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mayor, I want to bring up something for council's consideration that somebody asked me over the past couple of days, and quite frankly, I was embarrassed that we didn't think of it when we were working on the formulation of the ordinance. I think Counselor Barnes, Counselor Baker, myself, and Judy Thomas, as part of the Mayor Wetherington staff, we all worked together. We just sat in a room and locked the doors, and we didn't get anything to eat until we came up with a structure. But that's kind of far-fetched. We met on numerous occasions to work on this ordinance, and try to construct it in a way that the citizens would feel good about it, and they would have trust in it. And I guess what I want to put on the table for council's discussion is some type of question on the application that would fall in line similar to the question that we ask on our rezoning petitions, where if you have ever contributed to a counselor over the last two years, $250 or more, something like that, on the application, it should be a part of the vetting process. I would like for us to talk about it. I think it would do a couple of things. It would, in this day and time, this world of ethical laws that we all have to abide by, and total transparency, I think that the citizens would feel more comfortable about the process of vetting the many applications that you get every year.
Yes, sir.
To try to be on the list to receive funds to improve the program in which they're working. Now, I consider all those that are on this list viable, but I think that if we're going to start this, if we're going to add this question to the app, that we should delay this for maybe two weeks. If you can get it done in one week, bring it back next week when we meet, or by December 10th, and then I'm sure we can vote on all of them at that time. But I would like to ask council's consideration to, let's talk about that. I just want to see how you feel, if you think it's viable, if it's something we need to add to the application. I think I probably would need the city attorney's guidance on whether we could pass an oral resolution today, and then work on ordinance to amend that particular code section regarding the crime prevention law. But I really would think that the citizens would feel more comfortable about the direction we go in, and the process that Seth Brown works through every day. I mean, it gives him a little more comfort in knowing who he's working with, and what criteria they are laying out there to be judged by. And I think if everybody's on the same playing field, everybody's treated the same way, then I think everybody can feel good about the program as we move forward.
Sure. Clifton, you want to respond? I think there is state ethical law that would apply anyway, somebody who's getting pecuniary interest from an action of council. Of course, this is going to nonprofit organizations, but if somebody's getting pecuniary interest...
There's a couple of things we can do. I don't know that we have your application form in the ordinance itself, but administratively, this council could ask the board, it could request an oral resolution. You could ask the board, Crime Prevention Board, to look at adding a section to their form on applications, similar to the zoning language that says, have you contributed $250 or more to a mayor, or a counselor, or member of the Crime Prevention Board, whatever they may be doing outside of Columbus. That's one thing. Or we could simply come up with some language and alter the ordinance, but I don't know that we need to go that far.
I'm sorry.
It seemed like we would want to put that in the ordinance, but I know if we do that today, then that's going to delay the programs that he's presenting. And I thought if we could do a resolution today, then that would give them direction from council.
Yeah.
And he could go ahead and vet that question over the next week or two, and then that would not, I don't think a week or two week delay is going to impede any of the programs that are ongoing right now.
No, sir. I wouldn't, I would not think so, no, sir.
Okay, all right. Well...
Well, that's fine, if you want to pass a resolution tonight, an oral resolution, just requesting that the Crime Prevention Board check these pending applications, see if anybody has made a contribution, $250 or more, to mayor and council within the past two years.
Well, I put that in the form of a motion for council discussion.
Okay. Let's see, we've got Counselor Davis.
I appreciate the council's remarks and requests. I think that, I think it's very, very appropriate, and I was going to say that in light of Mr. City Attorney, and how things are done with the zoning applications, I think it would be very, very appropriate. And in light of, these are some, we just got this list on Friday, and it's come to my attention, in light of some of the things, just looking through it, that, hoping that we would discuss it tonight, and it looks like we are discussing some of these matters. But I think that we need to keep the integrity of this program at the forefront. I think we all want accountability. I think in light of the ethics laws, the transparency conversations that we're having about government, the accountability, that it's the right thing to do. And certainly, I think, however it's done, I think that the board can be involved in maybe coming up some ways in future application process. So, we would understand them a little bit better at the same time. And I understand my fellow counselor to my left here, Counselor Thomas, and what she was saying, and being, I guess, a former professional athlete, I understand what it's like to be held up on a pedestal constantly, and trying to meet those standards, and it is a high standard. It is a high standard. And I've always viewed my peers that it's not what you do, it's how you do it. You do it from your heart, and you do it because you care with no strings attached. Bottom line, no strings attached. And I think people, that's what they appreciate, you do it from a role model standpoint. And I would, I would hope that in all that we do, that there are no strings attached. I mean, I think that's our responsibility as a council with this program, that we watch it from that angle. So, I've heard some comments too, and I've heard it all my whole career about things of such, and why you get involved in things, or why athletes tend to get involved in things. But the bottom line is, you do it from your heart, and the truth of matter is, you can't do it anyway without the help from others.
Yes, sir.
You know, you've got to do it, you've got to have a team approach to things like this, or you're never going to make a difference. One person can't do that. So, it's really important that people see that, and that's the message, that it's from the heart. I, you know, there were a couple of things that I thought about with the new request, and, you know, I'm still unsure wavering right now, because we're talking, and I'm, I guess there's only one new request that's come in?
There's actually two, Sam Mark and the EDA program, are brand new.
And I need to get, I need to say this, because number one, I think that we, as a council, need to remain committed to the projects that we've already supported, and that we're all behind, and make sure that they're fully funded and they keep moving forward. I think that's a commitment that we have to keep with those programs. I also see the challenges that we're talking about at the table almost every council meeting now, that the projections of a 6.5 shortfall in the budget, shortfall in other areas, that we're not only communicating to our employees, but also from an aspect of providing services for citizenry. And when I look at, you know, everything that comes across here, every request for approval that comes across here, any new ones, is actually part of that shortfall.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, part of me says that, you know, is it prudent, is it wise to put some things on ice, and in a holding pattern until we get to a point that we better understand that? Or is this program, in conjunction with the rest of the government, part of the solution that ultimately we're going to confront? But I do know the budget cycle's coming up, and whatever we do today would certainly affect what we're going to be doing tomorrow. The last thing that I wanted to talk to the finance director about is, I know it was talked about earlier, about, basically about a cycle. I read in the paper that the Crime Prevention Board wanted to try to get things in a group, more in a group.
Yes, sir.
And confined, and on a cycle.
Mm-hmm.
That's the way I interpreted it.
Yes, sir.
In order to free up more time to be out.
Yes, sir.
In the community, and become more efficient and effective. I'm trying to understand, I think it was asked earlier, the first thing that we talked about, about the annual contracts, and I don't even know, because it's not in here. I don't know who's, if somebody still has three months left on their contract, six months, one month.
Right.
Maybe they're out of time, I don't know, and they need that funding today.
Yes, sir.
I don't know how that works right now, but I know that we're about to approve funding. But we're approving funding for six months, but we're also proving it in going into, some of these programs are going to the next calendar year.
Right.
So, my concern is, and it may take time, it may take, you know, a year, a year and a half, but that's what I want to ask the finance director. I know that we have controls in place where we're trying to get requests put on a cycle, our budgetary cycle, and there's a reason and a purpose behind it.
Right.
So, it can be managed and controlled. And I think that cycle starts in February, when all the departments submit their budgets, but how can, it was talked about earlier, one of the concerns I'm having is, how can we get this on a cycle, or, you know, I guess I'm just looking at, what is the appropriate way to do this, based on some of our guidelines?
Yeah, Seth and I have had many conversations about trying to get this cycle on our budget cycle, so when we bring the budget forward and presented that the recommended allocations out of the crime prevention is part of the budget process, and we're getting closer to that. We're at a point now where at least we're bringing them all at one time, and this is FY14's allocation. When it's approved in the budget, it's approved as a lump sum, and this is bringing forward all of those related to that allocation. And hopefully, in the next year or so, we can get the grant cycles on the same budget cycle, so it comes at the budget process time.
And that, you feel confident about that, that that can take place?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, that was, that answers my concern there. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Barnes.
Yes. I'm David, I'm, should I, I'm sure Mike's... Me and technology. I think it's a good idea what Counselor Allen brought up, because it's, you don't never want to leave a question. And, Mike, why didn't you think of this? Normally teasing. We were all together, and it is just something that just omitted, we just didn't think about. But something that, you know how you can omit something that's obvious, and we should have done that? And so, I will second, if we want to do an oral, did you put a motion?
Yeah.
Did you submit a motion?
I voted it.
Then I will second that.
Okay.
I will second that.
We've got a motion and a second, and we've got several people in queue to speak.
I mean, Mayor, before you get to the vote on it, Seth, if this passes, you need to get your board to ask, has any officer or board member of the applicant made these contributions?
Okay.
Because you got, there's people making contributions, not just, you know...
Yeah.
The grant, the nonprofit, Inc., so we've got to get at officers or board members.
And I think also whether they're getting any funding. I mean, is their salary being paid from this nonprofit? Are they the executive director and making a salary? Are they getting pecuniary interest, or not getting pecuniary interest?
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, well, board, I guess board members could be paid, that's fairly rare, except in corporate America, but I think that executive directors, a lot of times, get paid of nonprofits. And if an executive director, now, see, that would be prohibited under existing Georgia law. If somebody was getting pecuniary interest, and was making contributions, and then the city was making grants to the person who would be getting the pecuniary interest, Georgia law would cover that. So, anyway, you know, I think there's several questions there to be spelled out. Let's see, Mayor Protim.
Since I asked more questions than anybody tonight, I want to publicly say, I have not had a campaign fundraiser in eight years, and I think I have $100 and some dollars in my campaign account, so nobody has made any contributions, questions, the questions came from reading, the grant proposals, and questions I had. But Gary, I don't have a problem with your motion.
Okay.
To state, I have not received $250 from anybody.
All right. Counselor Woodson.
Well, Evelyn, you beat me, I only got like $5 in mine, so, no. On another note, I was having a sidebar with Gary, and it seems like this is something that, you know, we would like to do with all boards, or all entities of financial. So, maybe it's a task that we should ask the city manager, or the clerk of council, to go back and see on all these other boards or financial things that we have, if that's stated, if not bringing us that list, then if we want to make it clear to everyone, and make sure it's across the board to everyone, we might as well go ahead and do the homework, and check who else we need to put that clause into whichever board or program there is.
Sure, it could be purchasers and vendors, too.
So, I'm just recommending that maybe staff can go back and look and see with the thought in mind, and it seems there's a consensus around the table. So, instead of doing each one, one by one, one by one, if we could just find out who all needs that clause placed in it, then go ahead and do it. So, that would be my recommendation this evening. I'm not sure if it goes to the clerk of council, or to the city manager. So, Mayor, I'll leave that up to you. So, Mayor, I'll leave that up to you.
I think it would be the, maybe the city manager needs to look at it from a purchasing standpoint. I mean, it's, there are a lot of people that receive funds from the city government, and I think that is appropriate, to have some notation as to what contributions have been made.
And Madam Mayor, as Counselor Allen made his motion, I thought maybe the city attorney, and we can talk to him, can do something that's all-inclusive. I mean, it's across the board, and it's not just this program or rezoning, but it will be across the board, and so I think probably need to do it once and for all.
And that's my reason for it. I mean, instead of piecemealing it, you know, I don't know if you want to hold off for them to get the whole entire list, or if you just want to do it today. I mean, we could do this-
That's your request.
Okay, we go ahead and do this today, but bring it back then, and then we'll just do it across the board. And I say that because our conversation we had, you said it would be a nice goal to see it across the board. So, when I turned on my light, I was a little confused, and I had a sidebar, and Gary cleared my mind, and then the comment was made, so I said, "Well, why turn off the light? Let me keep it on, and let's extend it then."
And Madam Mayor, I think we can deal with the issue at hand with the resolution, but the first of the year, because we've got council meeting on the third, as it's planned, and then the 10th. And so, maybe in January, January, we could, with the city attorney, bring back and go when is that?
As part of the RFP process, it could be in the administrative requirements, vendors, things of that nature.
I'm just listening to the conversation and the sidebar, I thought, well, if that's what we're looking for in the future, let's just get it done. So, January is fine. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we've got Counselor Baker.
Seth, these are asking for one-year contracts specifically from when to when?
Well, that's what we're trying to work with Pam on. I mean, we can, the internal grants, they go by expenses. I mean, they have to turn in receipts and all that kind of stuff.
I follow you on those, yeah.
And the external, I mean, we can start those whenever, and we can, what we've done in the past is, we've done a one-year cycle. And so, our goal is to, as Pam said, is our goal is to have a deadline, like in February, to have these turned in. So, what I would like to do is have these grants that we're submitting today, they're external programs, have them end that June 30th date, so it would be a little bit less than a one-year cycle, so that way, that way the new ones will come over.
So, all of these will fund from today through June 30th?
Yes, sir. That's what we want to do. And that way, everything ends all at one time, a one clean ending, and then the next group will start July 1. We'll come back and, you know, we'll get our budget approved, you know, and Mayor, I can't remember exactly what it is, and then we'll have those ready to go.
Okay.
Have a clean cycle.
Well, I was just looking for some limitation, whether this is a one-year contract, starting when? If it starts the day we approve it, then is somebody gonna misinterpret that it runs from a year from that date?
Right.
I'm just trying to get a handle on specifically what time period are we talking about tonight?
The external grants obviously don't have any issue with how it's funded.
Are these funded lump sum?
No, sir. We, in the past, we've done 12 equal payments, and that way, I can go out and look at them, and we could say, like at month four, hey, these guys are not doing what they told us they're doing, and we can stop payment immediately. So, they don't, nobody gets a lump sum.
But then if you do that, we've got to somehow reserve the money, because if it's gonna be 12 payments, and it's, and we're stopping June 30th, then you're gonna have some more months to continue to make your payments. Is that?
You need to say something?
Maybe.
She's the expert.
Well, I'm trying to get to where they want to get to, as I do too. I want to get it all funded on our fiscal year, and if, you know, if they run different years, that's not our problem, it needs to be funded on our fiscal year.
What we've done in the past is, we've issued a purchase order for the amount of the grant and made 12 equal installment payments against that purchase order. So, the purchase order, come June 30th rolls into the new fiscal year, the budget comes with it, and it's reserved as fund balance out of that fiscal year where the grant was approved. So, it won't impact any allocation going forward, and it's taken strictly out of-
So, you're reserving the money and just paying it out of a different category once?
Yes.
Okay. Is that difficult for us to track? If you've got 15?
It's not difficult. If we issue a purchase order for that, and for those in-house, any allocation that's left over at the end of the year, we reserve that as already allocated and roll that budget forward. And that's part of the budget amendment when it comes forward, so we're okay with tracking it. That way, we would like for it to, the 12 months to mirror our 12 months, that would obviously be the best-case scenario.
Which is our goal, that's our goal going forward.
Well, I was gonna say, there's 10 people that can make that decision if we need to. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. We have Counselor Thomas.
Getting back to the motion that's on the table, and with what the city manager said, I would like to suggest to you that when you bring this back to us in January, the overall overriding language, that it includes some of the things that the mayor has been saying about those that are covered under Georgia law or whatever. Just do a complete look at the entire question, and it may be that between now and January, you may not be able to do, pull all of that together, but rather than do it bit by bit by bit, let's get it all done, and Mayor, you were talking about some of the Georgia law and some of that kind of stuff. Include all of that in the ordinance as appropriate, you know, language, say, do this as appropriate kind of thing, would be a suggestion.
Okay. Mr. Jamie Andrews, you have something to add to that?
Well, not to that. I was just gonna say, in terms of the crime prevention tamland and getting it into our budget cycle, as has been discussed, we might consider what I know one other grant program has done for many years. They've got a process where applicants are required to submit to them, let's say, by November, and then they are able to vet the application and go through the process, and then their board will have recommendations. And then those applications that they approve will come forward in line with our budget process, and they'd have to be submitted by the February deadline for our budget process, although they've been approved by the board. And then they are packaged into the mayor's budget, and then it all comes forward. And when it gets to you, and you start debating the mayor's budget, you know what his board has sent forward, and you're able to make those decisions, and then you know exactly how much you're going to fund the crime prevention program. And then, when you approve the budget in June, it's all there, it's all done, and then they can start their next cycle, July with submissions, by November, and you follow the same timeline. And that way, it's always in sync with the city's budget process. But that's done by another grant program that we have here in the city.
And I think that's, I don't know-
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, I think this is a great discussion, and I think maybe a finer point's been put on it by Counselor Davis here in the sidebar. He was saying that we do have budgetary guidelines, Section 31, that says no grant shall be made outside the budgetary process. But, and the Mayor Protem made this point, the crime prevention budget was set for 2013, and there was a budget, and it was reduced by 1.5% in 2014. It was reduced in 2012 by 2%, or whatever the cut was at that time. But there is a budget that council approved for grants. Yeah, and then Counselor Davis is saying, he wants to reconcile that with budget guideline, Section 31, about no grant shall be made outside the budget process. So, I think we may just have to look into that. Yep. Okay, Counselor Davis, did you want to speak to that? And then we've got one other counselor, we've got a motion on the table.
No, I think that we answered that earlier, we answered that earlier. I think the finance director said that she was working on a program as to the, I guess what I perceive is from council, as you talked about, what's been approved is basically a cap, not to exceed, but the actual requests are made, like we've talked about, in random throughout the year, and there lies the concern or the question that, I guess, it's more or less a city attorney and between the finance director, but I'm okay with what I've heard. I'm confident that they'll get it worked out.
Okay. All right, Counselor Huff.
Quick question. As we move forward this evening, are we trying to get the first part done in time to take care of the voting this year for all the people that are here tonight?
Finance Director, we would have an oral resolution tonight, asking Seth to go forward with the vetting process.
Read my motion, Clifton.
Yeah, you're on, oh, no, I'm sorry, okay. Go ahead.
Something similar to this. The, we're gonna ask the Crime Prevention Board to require disclosure on any grant application for contributions to Mayor or Counselor of $250 or more by an officer or a board member of the applicant within the past two years.
Okay, and what about the pecuniary interest?
Well, we're gonna look at covering other things in the ordinance.
I was talking about for this process, too. I mean, as long as he's asking, it's just one more question.
We can-
Well, whether they're being paid because of the grant. If you give them a grant for $50,000, and the person who made the $250 contribution is getting $12,000 of that in income, I think that's worth knowing.
I can hear the question.
Whether they're not, or what, you know, I think that's worth knowing, because the question for ethical guidelines is a quid pro quo. I mean, that's the question for ethics, is a quid pro quo. So, I think pecuniary interests have to show a quid pro quo.
I'm good with that, I agree.
Yeah, I mean, I think that just helps the conversation. All right.
Okay, let me, okay. Okay, just want to let everyone know that's listening, that we're trying to get things done, so you will have an answer before 2013 is up. How does that affect them as far as the next few weeks? Are they fine, budget-wise?
I've got a couple that are struggling that I would need to get moving on. I'm not sure if I want to say who they are here, I mean, I guess we could, but the others have not had any issues as far as stressing, you know, that they were in a, you know, the process is, because our board is so meticulous about evaluating these and sending me out and talking, so sometimes it takes a long time from when they apply to get it done. And we have a very busy board. We have a lot of board members that travel lots, so getting them all together at one time to try to vote sometimes takes time, and so, I'm not gonna lie to you, I have a couple of people that are coming down to the wire, a couple of programs. But then there are other programs on here that are not, that have not stressed any time factor.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney, will we be able to get it done, to vote on by next week?
Not by next week, if it's an ordinance.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Right, is for us to have an oral resolution. That's exactly right. And that gives them their guidance, and then we can address the ordinance that the city manager was working on after the first of the year.
Right, and we also meet next week at a regular business meeting-
Right.
-combined with our proclamation. So, if we do the oral resolution tonight, if Seth can get on the phone the next few days, and I know it's Thanksgiving, but we could come back on Tuesday and approve them if we have the information we need.
That was the intent.
Yeah, that was my question, we'd be able to move on it by Tuesday?
Clifton, I will be in your office tomorrow morning.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right, we've got a motion and a second on the table, as stated by the city attorney. There appears to be no further, no further discussion as to that resolution. All those in favor, please state aye. Are there any opposed? Okay, so, I think Seth, you've got your marching orders.
Yes, ma'am.
If you'll get on the phone with some folks, see what you can find out, and we'll circulate a memo to council and perhaps get it up for vote on the 3rd. Counselor Thomas?
Mayor, before Seth leaves, I was given, handed a piece of paper before the meeting started, someone in the audience who had four questions, and that person wanted to be able to ask those, and I told them that wasn't our process, but I would ask for them. Their four questions, and be succinct. It is, the hour is moving on. The first one is, for the Chattahoochee Jail Ministries, does the GED training, is the GED training provided by persons who are certified in teaching adult ed and GED?
Yes, they are.
Thank you. The second one is, how often are the programs that we're funding monitored or evaluated by the crime prevention director or the board?
Regularly. The way our, they know when they fill out an application that's in it, that I can pop in whenever I want to. The only thing that we draw the line on is, like counseling sessions, it may involve, you know, sensitive issues or whatever, so I just kind of show up. It may be once a month, sometimes it's, you know, once a week. They also turn in reports to us based on their success rate, you know, it's, the uniqueness of our program is that we are very hands-on with every program that we deal with. And they're all in Monmouth County, so we can, you know, it's not hard to get to them.
That leads into the next question that was, are there unannounced site visits and evaluations of providers, and are the results available for review by the public?
There's nothing written. I mean, what I do is, I show up, and if there's issues, I take notes and I tell the board about it. I mean, I could come up with a, like a checklist, I guess, but every program is so different, it would be hard to have like a generic checklist.
If a member of the public wanted to talk about one of the programs, though, they could call you directly.
Oh, they could just come see me, yes, ma'am. And I always say, if you can't get to me, I'll get to you. I met a lady the other day at Iron Bank Coffee, and we talked for an hour, and I had all the programs on the table, and we discussed every one of them, so.
And the last one, will the crime prevention director or board hold a public forum in the future and provide information and directions on how other programs can apply for grants in the next funding cycle?
That, we would welcome that, that's not an issue. We always go to the Let's Talk with the Mayor, and in almost every situation, she has brought me up and asked me to speak, I go to, I have said that I've talked to four people, and I've talked to 400. I speak to whoever wants to hear me talk, basically. We've never really had a-
And even some others.
That's, yeah, my wife would say, even ones that don't want to hear me talk. I've never had a specific public forum, but it's funny you said that, because Dr. Wright and I had talked about us maybe having kind of like a training meeting, I guess, to talk with them. Our forum is very simplistic, and it was designed that way. I mean, it's very detailed, but it's not hard to understand or any issues, but I'm always willing to speak to people.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, great. Well, thank you, Seth, and we'll get on that, and maybe make good use of 9 to 12 tomorrow before Thanksgiving.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate your time this evening. All right, let's see, as we move into the city attorney's agenda, we've got, Counselor Huff would like to make a comment. Yes, sir?
Madam Mayor, I didn't know whether to wait, but between you, Madam Mayor, and Mr. City Manager.
I'm sorry, yeah, we voted on the, excuse me, we've got a point of order. What is it that allegedly we did not vote on? We did not vote on the grants that are being held in abeyance until next week. We voted on the resolution, it passed unanimously. Okado, now, Counselor Huff, I'm sorry.
Okay, Madam Mayor, Mr. City Manager, we have a serious wild hawk problem within the neighborhood. I'm thinking it's coming from the Sand Hill side into the Washington Heights community. A well-established community that's not used to such, so they don't know how to deal with it as far as trying to get rid of them. I have advised them, please, please don't start shooting all over the place, because somebody might get hurt. But they're coming into yards somewhere between 11 o'clock and- they're coming into yards somewhere between 11 o'clock and about 3:00 in the morning and they're rooting up yards in the neighborhood. And it was reported to me about two weeks ago. And there's not enough money budget-wise for the animal control to deal with. And I think it's a little bit too dangerous for them anyway. So I got a phone call this morning that a larger herd came back in last night and they are literally crossing a street. They're coming out of the woods, crossing Tony Drive, going into John Smith, Buford. And I've never seen anything like, I mean, they rooted up one lady's whole backyard.
Wow.
So that, the property owners are concerned. And as far as trying to take care of property and then the dangers of those that have to go to work early in the morning or third shift at night. So if you can give us-
All right. Well, we will most certainly look into that and get with our animal control, the city manager. I know of communities that have dealt with that problem. I had not heard particularly to that extent. I, I think in Uptoway and some of the areas more rural, they had had a wild hog or two, but I'd not heard of a herd. So we'll, we'll get into that and see what we can do.
That was, caught me by surprise. I went by to take a look at it last week. And they were real concerned because they had heard about Sand Hill last year.
Right.
As far as Fort Benning having to bring in hunters and things of that nature to try to eliminate the problem.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, we'll look into it. All right. Counselor Woodson.
Yes, Mayor. I'd just like a, a little point of privilege. I received, and I wanna compliment one of our public safety officers, Sergeant Chris Anderson. And my reason for saying that is that I think it was Sunday night or Monday, a young man was hit by a car. The car left and just let him laying there. I don't know the whole details of the incident, but the individual didn't have any ID, anything on him. He was just laying on the ground. We couldn't find out who, you know, the young man was. And we started going through our community and all our resource, calling people and trying to find out who this young man is. But this officer who's in the motor squad, you know, he didn't rest in peace till he found out who this young man was because this young man is on a life preserve right now, the second. And, and I thought it was so wonderful that, you know, he didn't rest, not one moment, till he found this young man's family. And he went door to door. He went to businesses. He did everything he could on his own. And he actually found the young man's family. And, you know, when I was here, I was, you know, texting, I know probably people were wondering, why is she on her phone? I was on my phone because I was getting the information that we finally found the young man's family. And, and I think that's such a great, you know, it's such a wonderful story that, that I felt and felt that I had to share it. That this police officer, he didn't care was day or night. He didn't care what was going on. His whole focus was to find this poor young man's family before this young man passes away. And, and I think that you as public safety, I wish that you would call this officer and, and commend him.
I certainly will.
I sent chief a text telling him, please tell him thank you, that he is an awesome man of God that would take that time. Cause sometimes we get so wrapped up in our everyday lives and, and there's someone, something's wrong and we just ignore it.
Yeah.
And he did. And he went all the way to finding it. I guess after council, I'll find a little bit more detail about the gentleman and if the family needs any help or anything like that, we don't know. But it was a young man crossing Victory Drive on, across from Sonic. And someone just hit him and drove away. Didn't care. Just left him there. And, you know, thank God for those people that have a big heart, that stopped and helped. And, you know, thank God for people who believe in God that, that stood there and, and brought this young man to, brought this man and his family together. It might be the last time they see him. And maybe a miracle of God that the young man will be okay. But it was just important for me to share that with you and the public because anybody who knows Chris Anderson, you see him, thank him. Because he could've turned his back and he didn't.
Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention. And I will most certainly send down a notice of commendation. We have such extraordinary law enforcement officers doing things, incredible things every day. And, and I appreciate you bringing it to our attention. When they do, we, we do reach out and, and sometimes we learn about it quietly. Sometimes we learn about it with that type of public display of the officer doing something extraordinary. So thank you very much. And with that, we'll go into our city attorney's agenda. Ms. Okay. We've got, woo, let's see, how much is, what was that, one through four? Counselor Davis and, okay. We've got a motion by Counselor Davis and a second by Mayor Protem to approve items, one through four on the city attorney's agenda. Is there any discussion related to those items? Seeing that there's none, all those in favor, please press green for red, excuse me, green for yes and red for no. Okay. I think, yeah, we've got it. All right. Thank you. All right.
Thank you, Mayor. That's Williams Road, St. Mary's, the demolitions and the budget ordinance have all passed. Next, we've got a couple of zoning hearings. These are for property located at the southwest portion of 5576 River Road. This is a cell tower proposed rezoning. Got a revised description that's gone around the table. You should have that. It's recommended for approval. Are there any questions? Don't know if anybody's here from the cell company. Okay. Let's see if anybody's opposed. Does anybody in the audience wanna be heard or opposed to this petition? Okay. Any question by the counselors?
We've got Counselor Allen.
For the record, I'd like to ask if you could describe the tower, what it would look like?
Sure. The, the proposed tower at this location is 150-foot monopole. So a monopole is a single steel structure. There's no guide wires. It's just a single steel structure. And then the antennas are around the different, what they call RAD centers. So the different locations around the top of the tower.
Good. Thank you.
Are you Ms. Kelly Jacobs?
I am Ms. Kelly Jacobs.
Give them your name and address for the record.
I am Kathy Kelly Jacobs with Retail Services. I represent AT&T and my address is 3708 Stonewall Circle, Atlanta, Georgia.
Okay. Any other questions on this location?
Counselor Davis.
Prove the request.
Oh, yeah. We got, this one's, this one's on first read, number five.
This is just the zoning first reading. I think they probably will have a special exception at our next council meeting after this is voted on.
That's correct.
I thought it's a, this is a first reading on a variance?
No, this is the first reading on the rezoning itself. And then they'll come back with a special exception for the tower after this is rezoned.
Okay. So they do have to rezone the land?
Right.
Okay. I didn't realize that. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, ma'am. I think that's all the questions for now. Our next item is the zoning at 3845, 3857 St. Mary's Road. It's going from general commercial with conditions to GC with amended conditions for a general retail Fred's store. It's recommended for conditional approval by planning advisory commission and planning department. Petitioner here again with Mr. Hart. All right. Anybody opposed to the Fred's retail store at this location or wanna be heard? If so, raise your hand. Any questions from our counselors? The applicant is here. Okay. Don't see any. Well, you don't have to make a presentation. I think we all have heard of Fred, so. We will be voting on this next week at, is that a 5:30 meeting, Ms. Clerk?
Yes.
Okay. Tentatively at 5:30, I guess council will vote on that.
Right. We have proclamations first and then we'll go straight into a regular business meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Next item is, well, Mayor, this gap time ordinance may take a while. Do you wanna call up the other two? I know the people here waiting on my agenda a long time.
Certainly. However you'd like to proceed is fine.
We could just call up the court reporter ordinance. This is item eight on my agenda. We'd set the court reporter pay grade at 21 and add a seventh official court reporter when the new judge and new secretary come in in January of 2014. Judge McBride is here, Mr. Love, if there are any questions.
Doesn't appear to be any questions at this time. Counselor Thomas.
I do have a, a question. Is this changing the, the pay grade? Or is it just adding an additional court reporter?
It's, it's setting the pay grade at 21. There will be court reporters spread out across the 21 pay grade depending on how long they've been here. We've had a few that have been here longer than others. And, but as a general matter, they will be pay grade 21. Any new one would come in as step A. Is that correct?
Ms. Hodge.
The existing court reporters are pay grade 21. And when this first came about, they were placed in a 21J because they were long-term court reporters. This establishes the seventh one just as a pay grade 21 that will go through the normal process for hiring.
Right. Okay. Thank you. That's, that clears that up for me. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
All right, Judge. Thank you for being here. We'll vote.
Thank you all very much.
Next week at 5:30, we'll take a vote on that. Okay. Our last official item is a hardship variance request at 2557 Old River Road. I know Mr. Moon is here about a proposed new plat. This is for residential development and it's recommended for conditional approval.
We've got a motion for approval. Is there a second? There's a second from Counselor Woodson. Excuse me. Is this in Counselor Davis's district? It is the sponsor of the resolution.
I believe it, I believe it is.
Okay. And I see that there's no discussion related to the resolution. This is item nine. Okay. There's no discussion. We can call the question unless you, okay. All those in, all those in favor, please indicate yes by pressing green and, and red for no. Let's see. I've got one. Yeah, there we go. All right. And it passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. You can proceed to file that plat.
That's right.
Go back to item seven on our agenda, Mayor.
Okay.
This is an ordinance that would prohibit payment of gap time between an authorized minimum scheduled work hours and the threshold number of hours for overtime payment under the Fair Labor Standards Act. For example, if there is a 160-hour work schedule for law enforcement, a particular police field or whatever, the gap time payments, if any, would be prohibited above 160 hours until you hit the 171-hour threshold for paying overtime. And this would not apply to education pay and court appearance pay. We've got a few of those exceptions in the ordinance, but it would apply to any other compensation between that hour schedule and the overtime threshold of 171.
Okay. All right. And so public hearing on first read.
Right.
Is there anybody that we need to, anyone would like to speak for or against? Yes, sir. Just please come up and state your name and.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chris Shanifal. I live at 6306 Eighth Avenue here in Columbus. I know that some law enforcement officers' regular scheduled hours are 160 per pay period. Some are 168. For those that work 168 as their regular scheduled time in a, in a 28-day pay period, how would that affect those 168 hours?
Well, they would, under the FSLA, they would receive a salary and the salary would cover any hours they worked up to 171. Under, under a 28-day schedule, now, of course, you know, there's 21-day schedules, even seven-day schedules that you can have under FSLA. And the federal law sets out the maximum hours you can work under that schedule. And so your salary, under this proposal, your salary would cover up to the maximum number of hours. And at that point then, you would receive time and a half as required by law.
Okay. So you've got, for example, Columbus police officer works 160 hours, for example, in a pay period. A deputy sheriff who's on a certain shift, for example, or certain detail at the sheriff's office may be required as a normal scheduled work schedule to work 168 hours. Correct me if I'm wrong. The officer who makes the same salary as the deputy sheriff will get paid the same amount even though basically the deputy sheriff in that case is working an extra eight hours. Is that correct?
That's correct. That would be correct in that scenario. And it's called partial exemption under the law. Sort of like a manager, like to use the city manager, he makes a salary. And he can work 110 hours in a week or he can work 40 hours in a week. But he's gonna make that salary no matter how much he works. Under FSLA, law enforcement officers and firefighters were granted what's called partial exemption, meaning up until a maximum point, if you're called in to work extra two hours because you're finishing up a case, you're gonna have to work those extra two hours without kicking in overtime until such time you get to the maximum level of the FSLA.
Right. And I'm just wondering if FSLA's intention was for those officers who have to work that extra hour or two because of a, a late call, an incident? Or was their intent to use that time for regularly scheduled hours? I just, I just don't see asking certain people to work an extra eight hours for the same pay that others are working for basically eight hours less. I think that's the issue. You know, I, I like to use an example is if somebody's in a community or a, any type of job where they might work customer service, for example. And I work in a cubicle here and my partner next to me, we work together. We do the same job. We make the same salary or hourly rate. If all of a sudden you came and told me that my partner works Monday through Friday for this salary, but yet I have to come in eight hours every Sunday or every Saturday in addition to that, but yet we make the same rate, I don't think most people would agree with that. I, I, I wouldn't. I have to come in a whole extra day to make the same amount that my neighbor does. So that's, I think that's the main concern is I wonder what FLSA's intent was with the gap time. And, you know, I don't know what the fix is. There are several things you could do. You could hire a bunch more people and get away from the 12-hour shift. You could offer a, a shift incentive, whereas if you're working a 12-hour shift, you get some type of incentive for that. The other question I have is when UGA did the study for the pay plan, did they look at certain assignments? Yeah, they, they pretty much put all law enforcement line officers on the same line. But did they look at, you know, is this particular group or is this particular unit working a 12-hour shift, 168 hours a month, whereas this one's working an eight-hour shift of 160 hours a month? So maybe it needs to be looked at again where, you know, yeah, this officer makes this much because of his work unit or his detail he's assigned to. But perhaps another detail or assignment because of the work schedule, 12-hour schedule, should be on a different pace, scale, a different pay plan because of that. And I don't, I don't know what the answer is, but I just don't think it's right to ask Officer A, who works this shift, makes the same as Officer B, who has to work basically a whole other day in his month for that same salary. That, that's really, and I, I don't, like I said, I don't know what the fix is. I don't think any of those fixes, you know, meet their- I don't think any of those fixes, you know, meet the requirements. What we're trying to do here is find the money. I know it's what we're trying to do is find the money. And it seems like it's always coming out of the employees' pockets, and this is another example. I know it's been brought up that, you know, maybe this gap time shouldn't have been paid to begin with, and if it hadn't and we made a mistake, then we shouldn't pay it anymore. But this hasn't been something that happened, you know, two weeks ago or two months ago. Some of us have been working here 10, 15 years and when we were hired, they told us, you know, this eight extra hours that you're going to work, you will be compensated for it. And now, 10, 15 years later, it comes up that, you know, we're going to take it. So I guess those are just the points that I wanted to bring up. And the main thing was the equity of it. You know, if we're going to ask Officer A to work for this salary for this many hours, Officer B shouldn't be expected to work an extra day or an extra eight hours for that same rate.
Excellent points. Let's see if we can get you some questions answered. I know the city attorney can speak to the FSLA, what the courts have interpreted and that type of thing. We did look into UGA, but they didn't know we were paying gap time. They were looking at descriptions, so they were looking at FSLA and gap time. We did follow up on that on a request from Mayor Protim, and so that was the result of that. And you're absolutely right, it is possible to schedule people differently so that you don't have then built-in gap time. And other institutions do that, and it's something that the directors of the various law enforcement departments could certainly take into consideration. As you mentioned, like the police department, for instance, they're scheduled on eight-hour shifts. It's not to say that they never work over 160 hours or whatever it may be for their shift schedule under FSLA, but it's much more rare because it's not built into their schedule. So you're right about that. A director can schedule differently and lessen or eliminate gap time altogether. So let's get the other and then hear back from you again. Mr. City Attorney, can you talk about what FSLA says about gap time or courts?
The Fair Labor Standards Act doesn't address gap time, Mayor. It says if you have 160-hour work schedule, then you don't have to pay overtime unless somebody hits 171 hours. But what the courts have done is they have weighed in and it's quite clear, we've done research, so has Ms. Stevenson, on our circuit and other circuits across the country, you are not legally required to pay gap time hours worked above 160 and under 171. So it may have been done here for so many years, but it's not legally required to pay between 160 and 171. That's what's called gap time payments. It's strictly your discretion whether you want to make those payments or not.
Okay. And when we do have other exempt employees and they work over, they stay over, we don't pay them hourly, straight time.
That's right.
Because they're exempt.
As far as I know, exempt personnel just gets their salary and if they work overtime, that's covered by their salary.
Okay. Counselor Thomas.
Shanfield, one of the things that's going to happen if, as a result, if this ordinance passes, is that those people who are currently working 12-hour shifts in the Muskogee County Prison and in the Muskogee County Jail are going to have their salary cut by eight hours of pay, eight hours of pay period. That's one of the first things that's going to happen. I know that we have been told numerous times that we are not legally, legally required to pay this, but we have been paying at least in the sheriff's office, the correctional officers who work in the jail, who work 12-hours, 12-hour shifts. We've been paying them this additional money for many, many years, as you said, from 12 to 15 years. The Muskogee County Prison Correctional Officers, as I recall what the warden said to us when he was here two weeks ago, they just started this, I want to say a couple of months ago. It has not been, it has, I don't recall the exact amount of time, but it has certainly not been 10 to 15 years. It has been a much less condensed time. And so those people who are deputies in the sheriff's office and correctional officers in the jail who have been getting this additional pay have been getting it and relying on it for the last 10 to 15 years. I have a real concern about our obligation, if you will, to those people, not our legal obligation. I understand very clearly our legal obligation, but I also know that we have, I believe, a moral obligation to these people, that we have been paying this for all this time that we all of a sudden decide to cut their salary. The information that was sent to UGA, one of the questions that I have asked more than once and have never gotten an answer back from was, when the job description for the correctional officers at the Muskogee County Jail was sent to UGA, did it say that that employee, did it give the hours that that employee was going to work? If it was 160 or if it was 168? I know that I have been told that UGA did not take that into consideration. My question is, were they told that? Were they told that we have a classification of employee that works on a regular schedule, every pay period, eight additional hours? Were they told that and did they take that into consideration as they gave the salary for that? That question, to my satisfaction, has not been answered. And I do, I also looked at the information that we were given the last time we had a conversation about this, and one of the things that we were given was a document that said, for example, if you are in this eight-hour block, if you're one of these correctional officers, for example, the additional money that you will receive per year is 1,800 and some dollars, some change, a year. And that document that we were given said, then if you multiply that and the salary cost attached to that by 600 employees, it's $1.4 million. And that $1.4 million is what we're trying to deal with. However, the warden stood here and told us that he has 72 correctional officers on this schedule. That would leave 528 correctional officers at the jail. There are not 528 employees in the sheriff's office, much less all of those at the jail. I would think that that $1.4 million is probably closer to $700,000. $700,000 is still a lot of money, but it's not 1.4. And so I would like to have some of those kinds of questions clarified before I feel like I could in any way support cutting the salary of the correctional officers, both at the prison and at the jail. That's a personal dilemma for me and I am, I understand the legal requirements. I've been told that, I understand the legal requirements. I believe that we can legally do what we have done. It is not prohibited what we have done, it's just not required that we do it. And so, given that soapbox speech, I'm done.
Well, I think that's the main issue, is what's the regular, regular schedule? Because for some of us, some of us it's 160 and some it's 168. And just to be clear, I'm not one of them that's included. I don't work 12 hours. I work Monday through Friday, eight to four type hours. So I'm not even really directly affected by it. But there may be, there was a time when I was and there may be a time down the road where I may be again. So this isn't personal to me right now, but I got a lot of friends and that it does affect. And so I think the main issue comes down to, what is your regular scheduled hours per pay period? You know? I just, I just don't feel like that eight hours should be absorbed every, every month when I'm required to be there. It's not, I didn't, I didn't just get stuck on a late call. It wasn't a, you know, this is a one-time incident that happened this month. This is every month that they're required to be there for that time. And I think if you can make an adjustment to that, to say, you know, well, if you're on 160 hours, then, you know, for 160 to 171, then, you know, that's, that's the gap time you don't get paid for. But if your regular schedule is 168 hours, then perhaps you say, well, you get paid 168, but from the 169 to the 171, or adjust that number if you have to. I just, I just, I have a problem with requiring somebody to be there that extra eight hours and basically not getting paid for it.
Counselor Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to thank you and also tell you I admire you for coming down here and speaking your mind and to show some courage and some commitment to the folks you work with. I applaud you for that. I'll keep this short, I've got two main issues that are concerns and they really have me at a point right now where I'm not sure whether I'm going to support this or not. I know that we're short of money. I'm not afraid to make the hard decisions. I happen to think that some of the changes proposed for the medical coverage are really good suggestions and I plan on trying to support them just like they were recommended. This, however, is a little different. There's two areas of concern. One, I work kind of long hours in my job. I was hired at a salary. I do it because I love it and probably because I'm probably not as organized as I ought to be. But, but I knew what I was going to get paid when I took the job. I've been hearing from some folks that when they were hired into their positions, they were told that, hey, listen, your shift's a little long, but you're compensated for it. That's a big concern. If we brought anybody in and we told them that this was part of their compensation package, I got a problem taking that away. The other issue is, I think there is a difference in the, city manager and I were having a discussion, we're, we find ourselves, we don't often find ourselves on opposite ends of the issue, but I think on this one we do. I do see, he mentioned some of the folks that are critical to the operation of the general government that are on salary and it's not hard to call them up at 7:30 at night and catch them. And they don't get a nickel more. To me, and I get that, but to me, there's a difference in that, in scheduling somebody as their employer, you're telling them, you know, you're, you're going to be here an extra eight hours and then taking that pay away. So not sure how I'm going to vote on this, I'm just trying to make sure that everybody understands, I've got some concerns and I just want to make sure we do the right thing. I know we've got, I know we've got to find the money, but I want to make sure we do the right thing. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And also, again, if we schedule them differently, we don't schedule in the eight hours of time. And that's, and that's a director-level decision. And you can work different hours and you can have other schedules and not have eight hours of gap time built in. And the other concern is, it's sort of the opposite of the very good point you make. There are officers coming in and working because they're partially exempt and they may, but their director has put them on an eight-hour shift so they don't receive an extra eight hours of their paycheck and they're working hard too. And they're asked to stay over for that investigation or stay over for this and they may work 160, you know, something hours, but, you know, they're not receiving this gap time. And so it's sort of, I think, if somebody comes in and works eight hours and they work their 160 hours and go home and then find out that other law enforcement agents are, you know, getting a higher paycheck just because of the way they're scheduled, you know, I think it allows for a lack of parity, I guess. So I think you can look at it both ways. I think there's some people in the sheriff's department that aren't on 12-hour shifts and that don't work 168 hours, isn't that correct? And they're sworn officers. And you said you're, you're one.
Right, and that's, that's the issue. I know it came up one time about there being a difference between agencies, but there's some agencies, like one I work for, where you've got both in one. And, and it's not just at the jail. You've got, you've got people who work a 12-hour shift out of the office, either in patrol duties or whatever the case may be, but, so it's, it's, it's not just one area or one section or one department. It's kind of split and varies among one department. And as far as changing the schedule, we run four shifts. When we run 12 hours, we run four shifts and that's it. So I know departments who run eight hours have more than four shifts. And we have minimum staffing we have to maintain, so I think it'd be difficult to use the people we have and change the shifts around a whole lot. We have to maintain a 24-hour operation. I just, I think changing to an eight-hour shift, you'd have to add, I don't know how many people, I mean, that's beyond me, way above what I'm paid to do, but I just think that that'd be, you have to hire a lot more people and I don't know that that would be any financially better situation than what we have now.
Okay. And also, Pam, I don't know if you want to answer the question related to, I think there were some hour, hourly questions asked a moment ago. I can't recall what they were, but I made a notation that you may be. Mr. Shanfield, do you recall the questions you were asking about pay?
I don't recall.
We can come back to if somebody recalls it. I just made a note that he asked, asked questions about pay and hours. All right, and there are 12-hour shifts that don't work gap time, so it's not just eight-hour shifts. It's how they're scheduled to work 144 or 171. So it'd be a 28-day cycle, a 24-day cycle. You can schedule 12-hour shifts and...
Talking about changing the pay period.
Right, and, and not have, not have gap time.
Yeah.
Let's see, yeah, sorry, did you have?
No, no, I was, I thought you meant changing it based on a 28-day pay period, but yeah, if you change the pay period, you could, you could do it that way.
All right, Mayor Protim.
Mr. City Manager, do you know if we checked with UGA and when they did the pay plan, if their pay plan was based on 160 or 168? And if you don't know tonight, you can tell me you don't know tonight, but we can find out. And we may want to write or contact UGA again to find out whether or not the pay plan incorporated those employees who worked 168 hours.
Well, I will re-verify, but I can tell you that I have the HR director to contact UGA. And I think the mayor said earlier, they indicated to us they did not consider hours, they were salaried people in the way they consider it, considered it. And therefore, they applied a salary that would be appropriate for what they do.
Would that mean that all the sheriff's deputies would be rated on the same rating, whether they were in the jail or outside of the jail?
Well, in the, in the jail, they are correctional officers and that's, there's a different pay grade for a jailer and a deputy sheriff. I think there's one pay grade difference. I know the HR director can probably answer that, but there's a pay grade difference in a jailer and a deputy sheriff. And so they were rated differently.
In looking at this report, I don't know who gave us this report, but the ones that are 12-hour shifts seem to be in the jail.
Yes.
And the eight-hour shifts are the ones outside of the jail.
I believe, I believe that's correct.
No.
Is it not?
No, they, when you, when you're talking about correctional officers versus deputy sheriff in the jail, the only difference is the certification.
Yeah.
Certified law enforcement officer. So as I understand it, a deputy sheriff working at the county jail is the same pay grade as a deputy sheriff who may be working, say, in court detail.
Is there a difference in the jailer versus the deputy sheriff?
There is difference in correctional officer and deputy sheriff.
Yeah, that's what I...
In the jail, right.
Yeah, exactly. And that's what I was saying, I know there's a difference, maybe ones are 13, ones are 14, something like that.
I'm not sure of the grade, yeah, but the, the only difference being is that one is a certified law enforcement officer, so, you know, that deputy who's assigned to the jail is the same grade as the deputy who is patrol deputy or court deputy.
Absolutely, I agree with that. I was just saying the difference in the jailer that...
Yeah, there is a separate one for correctional officers.
And I did, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And to talk about when a person is hired and what they've been told, I think what has come about in that place is that the individuals who make the decisions on voting on salaries and... on salaries and grades and stuff like that, we're not given the same information as to what was being told individuals who got hired were told. And that's why a lot of this is coming out now. When the money was there, just free flowing, nobody really looked deep into what was being said to whom and how it was being paid. And it's been a trying time for us to even understand the gap pay concept. But I, I, I still would like to know if, if UGA would rate individuals who are hired on 160 hours versus 168 hours.
Now, I think that's a great question.
And I would like for them to put that in writing to us.
And, and I will certainly have them to follow up. I, I don't believe we asked the question in, in the way you just stated it. And so we can certainly do that and see what they come back with.
Okay. Um, and Pam, I did recall there was a request. Uh, Counselor Thomas said that she, uh, some, about 1.45 million dollars in gap time. I know there, there was an amount of pension contribution that was about 1.5 that relates to overtime, and so, and of course, it does affect, because gap time has an effect on pension. But I wanted you to speak to the 1.45 and, and that issue.
And what was included on the sheet as an estimate of 600 officers was an estimate. What we looked at was the total overtime paid by all the law enforcement agencies, and how much of it in a typical pay cycle relates to gap time. And I know they're talking about whether you're scheduled for 168-hour schedule or 160-hour schedule. Either way, anything worked over 160 hours, no matter which schedule you're on, gets the gap time. So if a police officer on 160-hour schedule works over the 160, he's receiving gap time, he or she's receiving gap time, just like the officer in the jail that works 100, that's scheduled for 168 hours, they're all treated the same on the 28-day cycle. So this was an estimate, and it was based on the total amount of overtime paid from those agencies, um, and we did just an estimate off of one pay cycle, how much of a particular pay period generated gap time versus straight overtime at time and a half. So this was an estimate, and my number of officer count was just the calculation to get to that estimated time.
And what is it? What is it?
The 1.4 million was when we looked at total overtime and how much of that was related to gap time. So the number of officers might be, you know, different unless you want me to break it down specifically by agency. I can go back and look at those reports and do it, calculate it differently.
Okay. Um, hold on, we got, Mayor Proton.
I would like to ask, um, the author, the post-ordinance, if we can keep this on first reading until we can get more information from UGA, please.
Sure. Yes.
Sounds great.
Okay.
Because it could, they could come back and rate an, a deputy on 1/60, under one classification, with one step, and those who are scheduled, regular scheduled, not who just happen to work 168. Those who are scheduled at 168 could be the same grade, but it could be a different step.
Which, which would be a great system, because then you could budget.
Mm-hmm.
And then you would know, we have so many people at a 14, and so many people at a 15, and you can budget for that. But the problem with gap time is that you don't know what your budget's going to be until somebody sets the schedule. You can estimate.
Well, I don't like the term "gap time" anyway, 'cause it...
Well, that's just the legal, it's the legal term for it.
I know, but it just screws my mind up. And thank you for coming.
I thank you all for your time.
All right. Uh, hold on, we, but you can certainly go sit down. We don't mean to wear you out there. Um, let's see, we've got Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, being an employer, I do understand the importance of schedules, especially when you're working with a finite or an, uh, X amount of revenue. That's all you're gonna be able to work with. Schedules are important, and, and I think that people need to buy, buy schedules. But, at the same time, I understand, and I know how it works when there's going to be a call, that people just have to take extra time in what they do, and they need to take extra time in what they do. And, and I guess in saying that, uh, one, I'd like to know, i- is there, uh, is there abuse here? Are we really, is there abuse here? And, and two, if the abuse is here, who's responsible for that? Or is there control? Do we already have control measures in place that kind of monitor what we're talking about here? That's, that's my first question. The, uh, the second one, I think, is important for the citizens watching, because this is where the confusion's going to be. And, you know, I'm going to use the, the, um, 911 calls, or emergency calls, um, a- as my, um, as my platform here, but I think it's real, really, response times are really, really important to people. And, of course, we have all these 911s. Help me understand, or play this scenario out where if somebody's on a schedule, but I can see if there's a 911 call, and they have to spend extra hours right on a shift change, answering it or addressing it versus, you know, going back into the department, and therefore, over a period of time, they may accumulate extra time. Now, I'm not sure if they're getting compensated for that, but I hear at a certain point over that, they'll get overtime. So I'm not sure where this gap time that we're talking about plays in there, but how does that affect, and you can even say the, from a court, going to court, where officers are required to, and I, and I know there's a lot of, we have a lot of public safety officials that are basically, you can just say nine to five. But when you're running 911 calls, and you got a nine or 12-hour shift, there may be a chance that you're going to have to spend some extra time out there in the field. Help me understand that, and help the citizen re-understand that. How, how is this going to affect them? Will it affect them? And will these, uh, is there compensation in place to, uh, uh, to address these times?
Right. Uh, well, as to the 911 operators, I'm not sure if they're considered partially exempt or...
Not operators. I'm talking about the...
Okay. The people...
I'm talking about responding.
They would be on, right, they would be on certain shifts. And so, uh, if they're on eight-hour shifts under this chart that we've got, then they work, if they run over a little bit, that's their salary. But now, if they reach 1, 160, 171, 171, then they make time and a half. Uh, so they're actually in the police department, they're actually scheduled so that they don't incur this excessive amount of gap time.
But is that, is that going to...
As a function of just being scheduled.
Is it going to have a effect on, effect on response times?
I would, I would think not, at all. I mean, how could it? You'd have to explain that.
Well, I, I mean, th- those are the questions I'm going to get, and I need to answer, because they, you know, those are concerns out in the community.
Right.
And if it's perceived as we're adjusting schedules or sticking to a schedule, then, you know, I'm like, um, let's just say it for, for, i- 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 certainly, all the officers would be motivated to answer all calls, but hopefully, hopefully, that's the situation. But would it get in a scenario where I'll just let the next officer deal with this, or the next shift deal with this matter? And then you have an issue with response times.
Okay.
Because they're trying to meet a schedule that we're now implementing, there's no compensation in between, or no compensation for these extra, extra hours. And I, I hope I'm explaining myself.
Yeah, no, I, I think I understand.
From a question standpoint, because that's what I, I perceive is the community's gonna...
Right. I would say two things. One, the law enforcement professionals set the schedules. And if they can do it in a way that doesn't build in gap time, then that would be more efficient and effective. And some departments have determined that, and they do that as a matter of course, and they don't have an abundant amount of gap time. Um, the, the second thing that I would say about your, uh, scenario is that this is only dealing with partially exempt, uh, positions. And so just like we have managers or director-level positions, we pay them a salary. If they have to stay late, if they get an emergency or something comes up, that salary doesn't change. And they don't get comp time either. And even majors, and captains, and high-ranking officials that are law enforcement officers that are responding to calls that are investigating crimes, burglaries, murders, all sorts of things, if they're exempt, they're not getting overtime at all. We're only talking here about officers that are partially exempt. And the law has defined how much that salary requires them to work. And on a 28-day schedule, it's 171. On a 24-day schedule, I think it's 144. And so these officers are much like, you know, the majors and so forth I just mentioned. You wouldn't expect a major not to, or, or another high-ranking officer not to respond to a call because it came in, because he says, well, you know, my shift is up, I'm going home, good luck to him. Um, these two, when they're hired, they're hired as partially exempt. And, and this is the law that applies. But the issue is, some, not all, some are being scheduled in, in a manner that builds in a set amount of hourly pay that's not required by law. And I think the point is, if we change this, they could be scheduled in different ways that wouldn't require the taxpayers to pay a million dollars. We could still have 1,000,000.4, what Pam just said, and we could still have the same amount of coverage, 12-hour shifts. And, and that's the debate. That's what we're, we're talking about here, is can we run our departments more efficiently to cover those shifts and put the responsibility on the directors to do so in a way that doesn't allow some officers to have built-in hourly pay, and other officers not, because they're scheduled in a different way? So...
About the first question.
Uh, what was the first question?
About the abuse and the controls.
Well, I don't, I don't know if you classified as abuse, and if anybody else can speak to this or not. I would say it is, there is certainly a way, and I think the, the warden spoke to it quite eloquently when he was here. He came from the state system where they schedule in such a way that they don't incur this gap time. And he was surprised to see that we were scheduling officers in a way that allowed some to reap eight hours additional hourly pay over and above their salary, and others not, because they were scheduled more efficiently. And so I think it's just a matter of, um, efficiency. Can you schedule your employees in a manner that covers the 12-hour shifts, um, and gives you the coverage you need, increases morale and all the things that, that directors like to do, and not have excess pay? And that's the question, I think, for, for the directors. And so that's what we would be, uh, considering here as a policy change for the city. Are we going to put in place, um, frankly, something that, that most other cities do, which is a requirement that you stay within the FLSA maximum number of hours before you start paying overtime, because they're partially exempt? So I, I don't know if I would call it abuse, it would just be an efficiency consideration. And, and the wardens run prisons all over the state, so he was familiar with that comparison.
My second question that you answered for, and, and thanks for, uh, thanks for taking the time on that, uh, just would be, the, the key would be remaining, efficiency's one thing, but being effective.
Absolutely.
I think is the, the key.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep. All right. Uh, Counselor Thomas.
Um, one of the requests that I would have is, if we're going to, um, hold the first reading on this until next week, would you please request, um, that the, um, those officers, the sheriff, the, um, warden, the, perhaps the commander at the jail, those folks be here so that if we have specific questions, um, we can ask them. Um, there, there are a couple of things that, that have been, that has been said that, oh, I know one of the other things that I would like to ask. What I, what I am concerned about, and what I'm talking about, are those correctional officers at the prison, and those correctional officers at the jail who work 12-hour shifts, um, every pay period. I'm not, I'm not talking about the, um, bomb tech who is, works a, traditionally, an eight-hour shift, but because of a call, has to work over. I'm not talking about that person. I'm talking about the person that is regularly, every pay period, scheduled for 12 hours. And we have, according to what the warden said, again, as I recall, 72 at the prison, and I think we have about 200 at the jail. I'm not sure what the number is at the jail, but the, those are the people that I'm talking about. I'm not talking about the police officer that gets a call at the end of his shift and stays over. I'm talking about the ones that are regularly, every week, every pay period scheduled. Now, that number, uh, Ms. Hodge, I think we ought to know what that number is. We ought to be able to tell from payroll how many of those people are in our employ. I would like to have that number. I also, um, would like to ask, uh, Mr. City Manager, that when you come back, that you bring with you whatever paperwork we sent to UGA six years ago, or however long ago it was, that described the correctional officer position. And did it so that we can see what kind of hours was in our communication originally with UGA? Uh, and, and so if, if, if it wasn't there, it wasn't there, and we can deal with that. But if you would bring back with you whatever kind of paperwork we sent to UGA that impacts this discussion, would you please bring that with you at, at our next meeting?
Um, Counselor, um, I, I will ask, um, HR to, um, see if they can pull that paperwork, and perhaps if they don't have it, UGA, uh, will have it. But let me tell you exactly what was sent to them, or what was provided to UGA. And I hope they can find it, because, uh, each employee, the correctional officer, would have, would, would have had to complete a form that was 17 or 18 pages long, uh, as I recall, if my recollection is, is correct. Uh, it's called a Position Description Questionnaire. And, uh, in that Position Description Questionnaire, PDQ, uh, they went through that form, and they told about what they do on their job, and they told what percentage of time they spend doing this, this, or that. And, uh, and then, once they completed that form, it had to go to their supervisor, and their supervisor signed off on it, and then the division manager, and then the director. And so I hope they have it, because it will show exactly what the correctional officer said, because he or she had to complete that form. And if, if there were, um, more than one person in that position, uh, then I think even during that time, they suggested that they get together, the group of correctional officers, for example, and, uh, they complete the form together so that it's all consistent. So I do hope they can find that form, and whatever is on that form is exactly what they put on the form, not what HR put on the form. And so I think it would be a good form this year.
Well, I, I'm, I'm not looking for 18 pages times 200 employees, or whatever it is, but, but whatever, you know, whatever you can pull together for us to say, this is what we sent UGA, this is what we told them, this is what they evaluated. That would be what I would like to, to have some concept of, if you will.
And, and I was just making the point, whatever they evaluated was exactly what the correctional officer put on the form and said, not what HR put on the form and said.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. And also make a note, I know that all the directors were here for our work session on the subject, but I think we should invite them back again for the first read next time. And I know we have, it, was there anyone else that wanted to speak on first read?
Mayor...
Yes, I'm sorry.
Just have one more question. I know the dogs are fast, but I don't know if we can get that from UGA in, in a week. Uh, we probably need to just bring the ordinance back whenever we get the information back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we do need to see, I, uh, we need to check. We did receive an email and some information back, and so I'd like to see what we've already, we may have the answers to these questions. I think we forwarded them to council, and I'd like to see that. That may be the answer to some, but...
We, we have the, the, the email that we did send to UGA and their response back to our, um, inquiry. Um, but I think the city attorney is correct. I'm sure they are probably on break between now and Monday or Tuesday next week, so, uh, we'll try, but it's probably unlikely that we'll have what you're asking for by Tuesday next week.
Yeah. Uh, Mayor Proton said, it's her question.
Oh, oh, well, the question, yes, your question. But your question, again, is a, is a... But your question, again, is a great question.
Yes.
I doubt if we will have, it's unlikely we would have a response back.
I didn't expect it to be on the agenda for next week.
Okay.
Because there's no way.
We can just say we'll put it back as soon as we can.
As soon as we get the response.
Right, when we get the information. All right, good. Good discussion. Not until it's up for second read, as long as it stays open.
We'll just delay that until we get information from UGA and anywhere else.
All right. Mr. City Attorney.
Mayor, the only other important thing is we need a short executive session on litigation.
All right, all right, sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay, and with that, I believe we've got public agenda. There we go. All right, first up, we have Mr. Christopher Brown representing Courage to Courage, and he'd like to speak about information and their work in the community. Good evening.
Good evening. How you doing, Mayor? City Council, those present? It's actually Courage to Change. You said Courage to Courage.
Oh, Courage to Change. You're right. It sure is. I'm sorry.
I'm here today, I'm doing a program over at the Ames Middle School, working with the kids. Most people may know it as Alternative School, but it's called AIM now. And I had an opportunity to do a project with them, and I just wanted to share with you. And I made some copies. I may have to go back and redo them. I think ink started running low. But I actually had them do a project on writing a letter to the mayor about their concerns for the safety of their community and what do they feel could be added to the community to help the younger generation excel. And to be honest with you, when I did this, I was completely surprised when I started reading them and actually getting the responses back, like, these are eighth and ninth graders. Like I said, been put out of regular school for whatever infraction they broke. But I was really surprised, and I just wanted to share one or two short ones with you. I made them real short. But I had one young man says, "I think that the community would benefit from being exposed to more recreational activities, not only sports, but educational things, too. For young men, there should be some type of classes added into the local rec center to teach boys valuable information. For example, if they had a construction or computer lab, the kids will have other things to do besides run the streets, besides every young man needs to know how to use their hands well and fix things." And this next young man, he wrote, "We are the next generation of this world, but do you see greatness within us?" Question mark. "Most of the elder teachers and people I know think this generation is a failure, but those same people tell us failure isn't an option. So which is it? In my community, young people seem as if we have no voice. We can't have an opinion if we want a rec center, if we want their library, or if we want anything. A community in my definition is a place where everyone has a voice, not just ours to see things get done without any type of say. We, as young people, have suggestions that we would like to see in the community. Better educational facilities to help kids with problems, not just send us to AIM and give us days to stay confined to a place. Also jobs for teens 14 and 15. That way they can earn money to buy sneakers and not sell drugs. Another thing we want to add is a place to take trouble kids, to help them find the right path and get a scholarship and not just send them to get a GED. And the reason I wanted to share some of this was because I know many of us see those kids in those black and white uniforms on their way to school. And a lot of people out here in the community, they know those kids that go to Alternative School. And oftentimes, people look down on them, and we know they made a mistake. I'm familiar with mistakes myself, but, you know, we have to realize that, I hear these kids speak on a weekly basis, and these kids want great things. When I hear them complain that they're not being challenged enough educationally at their school, they have, you know, people look down on them because they made mistakes. And I just wanted to be the one to say, the group of kids that I work with at that program are great kids. I get great responses out of a lot of them. They participate. We have a lot of different things that we're doing in the schools. Some of the parents are setting up to have the kids come on the weekend. And with the negative image on them, I just wanted to come and say today, yeah, they made mistakes, but these are some great kids that we're working with, and they just need opportunities and more people. And if any of you ever get a chance, just stop by. And if you get a chance, stop by the school and just speak with them, talk to them, and really pick their mind. And we'll see that they shouldn't be overlooked, just put down, you know, and pushed to the side. You know, even if you look at the attitude of some of them during the day, they, you know, they actually feel like they're in a prison at times by what they have to go through in the morning. You know, it's cold outside, taking the shoes off, the coat off, they get worn down in the school. And I understand concerns, you know, for safety and different things they may, you know, try to bring in, but they feel that way. They walk around with their head down a lot of times, looking that way. Some of them just kind of get down on theirself. But when I spend the time with them and get them to actually open up and I see the problems going on inside their home, inside their community that they're faced with on a day-to-day basis, these kids should be, you know, some of the best teachers that we have should be placed in this. And I know this is another concern for the school board, but it should be more resources, even, you know, getting maybe with the crime commission in their school to have some more resources, some programs, and really challenge these kids' minds because they're asking for it and they want to do better and want to learn. And I just wanted to share that so, you know, the public don't have that this is just a school full of bad kids. There's some kids that's going to come out of there and do some great things.
Wonderful. Well, tell us, do you have, is there a website or a way to contact if people would like other information?
Yes, ma'am. It's CourageToChangeInc.com, and it's the number two. CourageToChangeInc.com is the website. They can reach me at 706-987-4596 or 706-553-1054. And like I said, we're doing some things at Carver. I'm at Ames twice a week. And some of the kids that, you know, I hear the teachers say, well, this kid just, you know, we're going to lose him. All they really need is somebody to listen and just to see, you know, more people come in that don't look like, you know, people in the neighborhood they see, you know, the grown people. When they see grown people in the neighborhood, 30, 40 years old, a lot of them they see with their pants down, looking a certain way. And when they see me come in, I dress like this, I put my suits and ties on, it'd be funny to see even at Carver how some kids dress up just because they see me dress up, and I get excited when I see them like that. And I praise them, and they just start changing their attitude. So I just don't want people to look down at those kids over there and realize we got some great kids that's going to come out of there.
First of all, thank you for what you do. You're in the field every day. And I know that our Crime Prevention Director works very closely with you, and you've been able to intervene in many situations to prevent them from deteriorating. And so the community thanks you for that hard work. Excited to hear about this program as well, and I think several counselors want to speak to you, maybe get some more information. Counselor Huff.
Mr. Christopher Brown, thank you for being here. I appreciate all your hard work. Do what you give us and the audience an address of AIM where we can come by and visit.
It's the Old Edgewood School. I don't know the exact address, but it's the Old Edgewood School on Forest Road. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Proten.
I was going to ask, what was the telephone number again? Okay.
And it's one more, 706-553-1054.
1504?
1054.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
For all that you do, and good luck. Oh, and I look forward to getting those letters. I do respond. If I get letters, I respond. So I look forward to getting them. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have Mr. Nathaniel Sanderson, who would like to speak to us regarding the findings from a visit to the Muskogee County Jail. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Nathaniel Sanderson, and I'm local chapter president for the Columbus, Georgia NAACP. And our address is 514 First Avenue. Wanted to just come before Council for a few minutes and share with you, we had a meeting at the Muskogee County Jail on November the 15th. And want to say thanks to the sheriff and his team for opening up and allowing us to come in and actually answer some of the questions in reference to, at the time that we had scheduled this meeting, there were only two deaths in the jail. But by the time we got to the meeting and got there, there was another, sad to say, but there was another death there. So we did discuss all three deaths. And one of the things that came out of several things, I just wanted to share the team that we went in with. We took in, we had, and just to let you know, we had a retired 06, Air Force 06. We had a master's level mental health counselor. We had a master's level human resource person. We had a retired RN nurse. And we had several community activists. It was actually a team of six that went in. So we had a very diverse team that went in and sat down and talked with the sheriff and his team. And it was a very, from everybody that attended, it was a very productive meeting. We were able to learn a lot. And one of the things that came out of that is, and it's very clear, that the basic function of government is the safety of its people. If government cannot provide safety, then government is failing. So that's the basic premise that we should understand why we are concerned. It is the government, and when I say government, government is also we, the people. Because we, the people, are the government. We elected, we have elected officials and everything, and we charge our elected officials through a certain process to carry out the will of the people through a democratic process. But the basic function is the safety of the people. After that, then we can have all the niceties and amenities and everything like that, and that's fine and dandy. But we were able to sit down and talk, and we found that there are several areas that regardless of what happened, we're not, we didn't go there to try to find, to try to investigate any three murders, I mean, any three deaths or what happened with that. We went there to find out information. There are ongoing investigations, and that was not our intent. We were there to find out what the process is and what information we could gather to make sure that those deaths or deaths doesn't occur there again. And one of the things we found out, it goes back to, I think it was 2008, when we passed a one-cent sales tax and we hired 100 police officers. Everybody may remember, it was a process where we hired 100 new police officers. And it was brought to our attention that if you hire 100 new police officers, they're going to go out and they're going to arrest people. 100 new police officers on the street, arrest rate is going to go up. It just makes sense. So with the arrest rate going up, and then you take, on the other end, we look at a court system that is backlog. Right now, we have, in the jail system, right now, we have some 800 people that are in jail right now, waiting to go to trial or waiting to have their case disposed, whatever it is. But there are 800 people right there right now. And mind you, they're 800 plus. Mind you, these are our citizens. We are all capable of being incarcerated and not convicted because these people are just in jail. They are not, for the most part, they have not been convicted of a crime. Normally, if you get convicted of a crime, you go to prison. In jail, you may be awaiting trial or you have a small, a short sentence, whatever. But the overwhelming majority of the people go through that system. They are innocent. And to have, to have a community with these many deaths.
That's just your five-minute warning. If you could draw your comments to a close, but I'm going to reset it here.
My five minutes seem shorter than everybody else's five minutes, every time I come up here.
I tell you, no, we don't need a motion to be heard. It's just a warning.
Well, I just think it's very important that we understand that these are citizens that may have not, may be innocent or may have committed a crime. But once we, as a community, take away a person's freedom, we assume the responsibility to protect them. Once we incarcerate a person, and especially if they are not found guilty of anything, it's becoming upon us as a community to ensure that they are safe. And whatever, when we take that freedom away. That was, so the two things right there, more police office backlog in courts. On top of that, we are cutting, cutting, cutting. I've heard a lot, I've been here for two and a half hours. I've heard a lot of great programs. Seth Brown was talking about some drug courts and all of those things. Those things, we need to expedite some of those things really quick so that we can get a burden some kind of way. Our system is not holding up. For some reason, there's something broken, and that's what we found out, that there's something broken, and we need to have a fix to this with the people being arrested and staying in jail. Then, on top of that, one of the other things we found out was that we have a big problem in this community, probably state and nation, with our jails having to provide mental health. We have a lot of people that are being incarcerated when they should be getting mental health treatment. And that's putting an added burden on the system. So, and in closing, I think in closing what we found out, and we have been invited to come back, and we are going to go back at a later time to visit with the sheriff. I like to say visit. We're not inspecting. We're visiting the sheriff department, and it's had his pleasure to invite us in. And I thank him for that, and I encourage anybody, his staff is very open to having any organization go down and look at it. And as we sit and think about Thanksgiving and all of the things, that wonderful family times, we got people that are sitting in jail, and we are responsible for their safety. We, as a community, you as an elected body, the executive, legislative, and the judicial government here in Columbus, Georgia, has a responsibility to make sure that every citizen is safe. And I don't think right now that we can answer that question, that we're doing the best that we can, especially with the cuts that we're asking to take place. And it's been in the paper and everything. And some of the cuts that are going on, some places you may be able to cut, but some things I don't think that you can cut. And safety, we pay for it in the long run. When we start cutting safety, we pay for it. And that's, those are our preliminary findings. We will be going back, like I said, we will be going back and doing more visits with the sheriff. And we will definitely be waiting on the autopsy reports. And we would definitely, we're interested in autopsy reports and any other reports that the GBI comes out of that. But that's not our scope. That wasn't our scope. Our scope is to make sure that we have a safe, everybody's civil rights are protected, and even if they are incarcerated. And I'll stop right there.
Great. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, sorry. Hold on a second. Mayor Proten.
Nate.
Nathan? Nate? Please come back to the conference.
I wanted to make some comments. I agree with what you're saying, but we have to also let the listening audience know that you're not saying that we have to do something because we can only allocate the funds that's available. We can't, we have no control over what happens in the jail or what happens in the court systems. Those are not under our judicial responsibilities that we can go tell them, you have to do this or you have to do that. So I just wanted to make sure the audience know that we're not trying to be derelict as elected officials, but we can only go so far, and the law will not let us go any farther.
Well, I understand, and I agree with you, Counselor, that I was not trying to lay blame on one entity. And I think that's why I said, we collectively, we, the people, we, the government, and we do elect individuals to represent us. So at one level, we have a re- So, at one level, we have a responsibility, and at another level, you have a responsibility, the executive, the executive branch has a responsibility, the judicial branch has a responsibility, and the legislative branch has a responsibility, and we collectively, as citizens, have a responsibility.
I believe in being collective, but sometimes you have to make sure that the people that's listening, that's hearing this, understands.
I, I agree. I agree. You're not gonna, I, I agree with you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, next, we have Mr. Siobhan Talbert, who would like to speak with us about my brother's keeper foundation regarding the march for the first annual Stop the Violence Rally to be held on January eighteenth, two thousand fourteen, at the Fluellen Recreational Center. Good evening. How are you all?
Hello, everyone. Good evening. I'm fine. My name is Siobhan Talbert. We, we're with, um, my brother's keepers foundation, and it's...
And let me apologize, it says mister on here, so I didn't know, but it's very good to meet you, Ms. Talbert. Okay. Here we go.
Squeezed Productions, Tina McCray. My brother was killed, um, by act of violence.
Yeah, pull that microphone just to you a little bit, there you go.
My brother was killed by act of violence, by five young guys here in Columbus on September the twentieth, two thousand and thirteen. And me, myself, my family, and close friends, we're here to come into, um, do a Stop the Violence March. And it's gonna be, um, on January eighteenth, two thousand fourteen. The reason we're here this afternoon is to, um, we're trying to make a difference in the community, because there's so much going on, so many killings going on, and we really trying to take a toll on it, you know? Um, it's time for it to stop. My brother was the seventeenth murder in the city, and it was four more after him. And it seems like it's continuing. And I think it's time that we, as a community, do something about it. And I'm hoping that each of you will support this effort, because if the community, public officials, elected officials, will stand together as one Columbus, together, we can make a difference.
We have our files here about our rally. Can I give these to you?
Yes, please do, yeah. And we also, while y'all are handing that out, may be able to partner, I know that there's a couple of groups planning similar things on that day or in that timeframe. So, it may be that if we can contact you, if you'll leave your information with Liz, uh, we might be able to coordinate, do something even larger, you know? Um, because there's a lot of groups interested in this same very important cause, and certainly we all here are very interested. Um, and so, I know of several things going on, and we might be able to sit down and share. You may wanna not be involved in those, or, you know, do your own thing, or you, you might want to be. It could be a bigger crowd. So, yeah, tell us what, um, what time you're planning on having.
It's, um, it's, the march starts at three o'clock. We're gonna be at the Michael, we're gonna start from the Michael Fluellen Recreation Center, and we're gonna march to the actual spot where he was murdered at, and we're gonna march back to the, um, Michael Fluellen Recreation Center, where we're gonna have guest speakers. We're gonna have information on how to obtain your GED. We're gonna have information on how to, um, join the military. We're gonna pass out, um, books and bibles. We're gonna, um, also, we're gonna give refreshments as well.
We'll have, uh, t-shirts and posters and, uh...
Wristbands, we'll pass our wristbands. We're gonna do releasing of the balloons for all of the other victims that has lost loved ones.
Now, is it two o'clock or three o'clock? It says two...
The march starts at two, but we ask everybody to be there at two o'clock, so we can get everything.
Oh, I see. Okay, so, two o'clock at Fluellen's.
And Mayor Thompson, we do need some help, because we need, um, we need porta potties, we need, uh, we need some help from the enforcement, law enforcement, we could get some help from them. And, um, some of the things that we need in financial, and we haven't totaled up everything that we needed, but we did need some things from the city to assist us with. So, that's why we're coming forth and asking for everybody's support.
Great. Well, we'll definitely, um, get with you, your contact information's on here, I think, and, uh, yeah, I see. And, uh, and see if we can't coordinate, if you'd like to, and, and what we may be able to do. Uh, Counselor Huff.
Thank you for coming.
Ms. Talbert, uh, called me a little over a week ago and informed me what was coming up. And I informed her that we needed her to get in contact with you, Mr. City Manager, and you, Madam Mayor, because of it being the weekend and access to the Fluellen Rec Center, because I know sometimes it's closed. And she's been involved in, Ms. McCray and all, in, uh, back-to-school giveaways and things of that nature at the facility, so wanted to make sure that they were able to get the help that they needed. I told me, we just start with you and work our way down from there. I'll get with you to find out what you need me to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. I, uh, had a chance to, uh, meet with Ms. McCray and talk briefly on Saturday evening, so I, I gave her my word, I'll be there for you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your time.
Thank you all so much. All right. Next, we have Mr. Tally Strode, who would like to speak to us about budget recommendations. Good evening.
Good evening. And, uh, I'd like to take an opportunity to wish each and every one of you a happy Thanksgiving. And I hope you enjoy your turkey as much as I'm gonna enjoy mine. I'm here to speak to you on a couple of topics. Number one, and I'm gonna try and get through this quickly in case there's some, uh, additional discussion, and that's House Bill four sixty-nine. I think all of you are familiar with it, but this, uh, is the bill that was advanced by, uh, Richard Smith, Representative Richard Smith, uh, that provides for retirement income received as retirement benefits.
Please talk to the microphone.
Yeah. I'm sorry, yeah. And I don't know if that one's, here, I'll pause this.
Testing, testing.
Yeah, that's good, and this might be better, 'cause it's closer, but wherever, wherever you feel most comfortable.
Uh, right.
Do you wanna try that one? Okay. That's just a little higher, and that's wheelchair accessible, so that's why it's a little, little lower.
Okay.
Okay, we'll, we'll restart here. Go ahead.
Sounds like a plan.
All right.
But you can see there are all of the essential elements of information about the bill, uh, the sponsorship. It phases in a twenty, twenty percent per year, uh, uh, impact on taxing of retirement income over, uh, a period through calendar year seventeen, two thousand seventeen. And the status of that right now is, uh, in the House Ways and Means Committee, and , uh, sitting there waiting for a push, okay? I think it could appreciate a push. And, uh, the one other thing that I have on there is just to, to help you understand The value to households, to the households affected is like five dollars and fifty-two cents per a hundred dollars of retirement income. The value to Columbus Consolidated Government is about twenty-four cents per hundred dollars of, uh, military retirement income. And what the state is giving up because of the way this works out, they're taxing that at six percent, now we're, now we're, thanks, man. Now, we're, uh, uh, seeing it retained in households, spent, and we're getting sales tax from it. Well, what they're giving up is about five dollars and seventy-six cents per hundred dollars of retirement income. And that's a hard enough crack for the state right now with their fiscal challenges. But there's some other issues out there, uh, that I think we need to take into consideration. Number one, what's the competitive, uh, community value, uh, to Columbus and the other cities or communities in the state that are gonna be affected by this? Uh, we know right now that we're in competition for population growth with Phoenix City, you know, our neighbor to the, neighbor to the West. And, uh, I know, based on the people that I talk to, we're losing that battle, okay? Because there's a big incentive for folks to move over there, because their income is not taxed, uh, their retirement income is not taxed. And everybody knows about that, we talk about that openly. The other thing is, is that there's a competitive business value, because the incremental revenue from, instead of it, this money going to the state and supporting state requirements, it stays here, it gets spent locally, it generates sales tax, and it helps not only the state out, because they're getting some of that money, but it also helps us out. And I always use a formula, uh, for every dollar that we keep in someone's pocket, they have an incentive to spend three dollars. Uh, and that's verifiable with even, uh, Georgia power, uh, because that's one of their assumptions when they start talking about giving rebates and things of that nature. So, I think that we have an opportunity here to help us help ourselves, and also deal with some issues, uh, that have materialized over time. And just to give you an idea of, uh, some of the things that, just going through the CAFRs and, you know, trying to quantify this, uh, I took a look at the, uh, population between two thousand ten and two thousand twelve, what was the change, okay? These are Columbus Consolidated Government numbers. It's like forty-three, forty-three people, okay? And, you know, our population growth is anemic, so if we're not seeing, you know, all of these expectations that we have translate into something in sales tax revenue, okay? Well, here's a good indication why. We're not growing, you know, as a community. And Mayor, one of your philosophical points is growth follows population, you know? So, we see an indicator here as to why we might be seeing some things in our, uh, in our P and L. Also, uh, employment by principal employers. Now, this was interesting. We lay out the top ten employers in, in Columbus, Georgia, and the percentage of, of, uh, uh, city employment that they represent. When you do the math, that translates into total employment of the numbers you see on the right. Well, if that's only grown by ninety-nine jobs, okay? And we're saying the top ten employers has grown by one thousand three hundred and twenty, some, something is dropping, something's reducing. And it has to be in the smaller business ranks. So, again, to me, the anemic population and the fact that the big guys are growing in their impact on the city, which is a good thing, but the small guys are dropping in terms of their employment, that says something to me. So, I think, uh, Mr. Brown made a point, uh, that the governor said, "We gotta do something different." Well, we do have to do something different. So, what I'd like to do is to challenge the city council to get behind this House bill and support us in the following ways, support it in the following ways. Number one, drafted up a letter, I'd like for you guys to give us some space on the CCG website, to put this letter out here, so that citizens can access it and get active with their representatives. And I'm not just talking about here in Muskogee County, Harris County, or some of the other, uh, surrounding counties in our, uh, in our area. I'm talking about across the state, so that we can start giving some, uh, uh, foundation to this bill to help it move forward during this political season. We don't have a lot of time, so this would be very helpful in facilitating that process. And then also, for any of you that are interested, I've got, well, I'm not even gonna get into numbers, but I've got several military retirees that are chomping at the bit to get moving forward with this. And they're not, and we've made it, made it a point that we're not just talking about military retirees, because this impacts everybody. So, we want all citizens to get involved in helping put some legs under this bill and get it to walk moving forward. And then, uh, below that, in terms of the local marketing, also at the state level, because this is a state issue, and it's gonna take, need state support, uh, getting that support, uh, through, uh, the different avenues that we have, which are very similar to doing it at the local, local level. So, that's point number one, subject to your questions, I'll move on to point number two.
With, uh, point number two. And there's only two minutes left, and I've been stopping it in between the, the walking and, and having to change it to others, too.
Now, I've been appearing here before you, uh, over the last few months, uh, in anticipation of the budget cycle coming up. And one of the things that I've been doing is laying out different projects and giving you pro formas and all of that. And, you know, listen, we can argue about whether the numbers are right and all of that, but the point is, is that we're gonna have to do something differently, if we're expecting a different outcome, okay? So, I just wanna revisit this, because they're still out there, and the list is gonna grow. But at this stage of the game, the projects that we've laid out have a commercial value, in other words, folks spending money in Columbus, Georgia of a hundred and sixty-nine million dollars, okay? Uh, to households, twenty-four million dollars. And then the net of the property tax value that the city is giving up to facilitate some of these projects versus what's gonna be gained in sales tax is a little bit, little bit short of three million dollars, okay? So, I'll be coming back to you and sending you more additional information on these projects, just to help you. Remember the adult learning thing, we gotta see it several times and say it several times before it sinks in. I'm gonna continue that process, so that we, when we get into the budget cycle, that you are thinking bigger than what we've done in the past. Now, one of the topics I'd like to speak to in my last forty-five seconds here is the non-core privatization, number one. Remember, that's the one where we would take some non-core business entities that, that are currently under the government, the city government, and privatize their management, we maintain control of the physical assets, so we don't get into any issues with the state or otherwise, and structure it in a way that they're successful, but we've relieved the city of that financial burden for those personnel and some of the other expenses associated with them that are actually, right now, a net loss, a net loss to the city. So, if we're looking for money, we're gonna have to take a different approach to get where we wanna go, and that's to, to build our financial solvency, okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And, and did want to let you know that we do strongly support the military retirement exemption, so thank you for that. And, uh, we did put it on our legislative agenda, and are pushing it very hard, so...
Right. Gotta give credit to the, you know, to our delegation for backing that bill and getting it to this point. We know it's been a, a fight over several years to even get it on the docket, so, but we know a lot of work is done there. And Pops, appreciate your support in moving forward with some of this stuff, you know? Because we, we, I just think that we're missing an opportunity if we don't make this happen now, okay?
Mm-hmm. Thank you very much. And, uh, with that, we'll move into the city manager's agenda. Um, okay, hold on, uh, Counselor Huff?
Uh, yes. If you don't mind, could we move number two up to number one, 'cause he's been with us three, three and a half hours now.
I know. Yeah, we've got a motion for approval of one through eight. Is there a second for that? Let's see here, so, we're gonna have to look and... Does anybody wanna pull any of those items? Okay, which?
One through six. One through six.
Okay. All right. How about a revised motion, Mayor Protem, one through six? Is there a second for one through six? There's a second. Um, how about, uh, Counselor Baker? Did you have any?
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
Okay. All right. So, items one through six have been motioned and seconded for approval. Is there any discussion related to that, those items, excuse me? Yeah, just make sure everybody knows what we've got. Second, any discussion? All right. Uh, hearing none. Uh, all those in favor? Chris, it's like, all those in favor, uh, please indicate by pressing green for yes and red for no. Wonderful. They pass. Thank you very much. Tom, thank you so much for your patience. Hopefully, you see, your government is working for you.
Right, it's on work.
That's right. All right, Mr. City Manager.
Madam Mayor and Counsel, uh, I've got purchases, uh, A, I've got, uh, hot asphalt and general road repair.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second, to approve purchases, and we've got Counselor Baker with discussion.
Yeah, no, I'd just like to, uh, vote item C separately, please.
Okay, hold on just a second. A, B, D... A, B, D, and E. Okay, I see. Okay, I'm with you. All right. Let's see. We've got Counselor Thomas.
I, I would like to pull E, just so the city manager can give me a little more information about what that, what that is. I, I think that, yeah.
Okay. A, B, and D. All right, I'm with y'all now. We've got items A, B, and D. Is there any discussion related to those items? And, and Mimi, did you second?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. As to items A, B, and D, we will put that up for a vote. All those in favor of A, B, and D, please signify yes by punching green and punch red for no. All right? All right. We've got motion to approve E. And Counselor Thomas, did you have discussion?
No, I just would like for the city manager just to give us a little information on.
Madam Mayor, you know, since we, and Council, since we moved into this building, we've been working with cable providers, Charter, WOW, and MediaCom, and we, we've gotten to the point that we think that we're going to be able to move forward with connecting MediaCom. We had worked to deal out with Charter and WOW, and we were waiting for MediaCom, and this is going to allow us, we've gotta spend some money, because they will connect to the right-of-way, the fiber, but then we've gotta get from the right-of-way into our building, and then they've gotta have the equipment to connect us, and that's thirty-eight-thousand, forty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents. And so, we're asking you to approve the necessary money we need to connect from that point that, of the right-of-way to the building and for the equipment to get CCG connected, so that we can then go live with MediaCom like we are doing with others, that we won't have to run back downtown with a tape and then broadcast it. They won't, all of the MediaCom subscribers will then be able to see you live, as they are not able to see you live tonight, and they missed a treat.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Does this, does this then, does this then cover all of the, all of the cable companies, or are there still a couple out there that we're working with?
Well, we've got WOW worked out, we've got Charter worked out, and this will be the final one that we need to work out that we will...
This will be the final one, did you say?
Yes, the three providers, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. And so, we've got item E up, and it has been seconded, and there's no further discussion.
And there's no further discussion. All those in favor, please indicate yes by pushing green and no by pushing red. All right, and it passes. Okay. And next, we have on our agenda, item number, or items, lettered C, workers' compensation claim management services.
And Madam Mayor, I can't imagine why we delayed this one for last, but we've got work.
Okay. We've got motion to approve for purposes of discussion in a second.
We, we've had lots of discussion on this, as you know. We did, and I, I won't go through the history, I think you know it, but we did an RFP, went through an evaluation process with an evaluation committee, and we are attempting to move to a managed care system. We believe that is a better fit for us, our size of government. You've had a lot of questions, and we've had a couple of work sessions to answer questions. We've emailed, you've emailed questions, and we've emailed responses. And then, at the last meeting, we had our risk manager to come and share with you the response, responses to questions that you had asked. And so, we're now at that point that we, Amerisys was the preferred vendor from the evaluation committee. We're bringing it forward. We're at that point now that we're asking you to approve the recommendation through the RFP process and from the evaluation committee. We hope that you'll approve this. If you don't, then we'll simply have to go back out and do the RFP over again and go back through the process and come back to you, because currently with ACCG, we are on a month-to-month basis with them, and we need a permanent vendor. And so, we're asking your approval of Amerisys to handle our workers' compensation claim management services. That's our request tonight.
We have Mayor Protem.
Yes, thank you. And my comments are me talking, not, you don't have to respond back to me, it's not a question.
Sure.
Um, we have spent a lot of time on this. I'm going, I am going to support it because of all the savings and because we have decided to change the way in which we do workers' comp with the managed care. But I want to make it understood that that, in no way is this a negative reflection on ACCG or the physician panel that we have been using in Columbus.
Sure.
So, I expect these big savings that we were told we should see next year, and if we don't see them, somebody's gonna be in trouble.
All right. Let's see. Counselor Huff?
To make it known to the public, so that they will know, the general public will know what's going on, ACCG did respond to all of us with a letter explaining how they handled workers' comp over the years, and I'm still a little baffled about the fact of being accused of being on the wrong side of it. I think Counselor Baker and myself are both of high integrity and character, and I think the city would want us to be a member of boards, and we are only a member of boards to go and serve the city and bring back information to the city to better run our city and have great firsthand information here for the councilors to make a decision. But based on us doing business with them over the years, I just found it a little hard to say that they've been doing it that wrong for that number of years. I thought that when someone had a problem, they would probably address it within, you know, a year or two, to let, let the company know or the people know that we need to make a change, change the way we do business or change our carrier. So, what I'm saying to sum it all up is, it's been talked about, like the Mayor Protem spoke of, a lot of savings. This has been talked about a lot, so I hope the savings comes in, because my understanding is we'll be right back here next year if we don't have savings. And if we don't have savings, then it didn't really make sense to change. I am choosing my words carefully, but it has been interesting to me to watch the numbers, and it's, you know, one opinion against another, and we've gone around the world and back. I hope and pray that we are right, because I, I just, it's hard for me to understand how we had an open discussion in the beginning, and the present carrier during the RFP finished fifth, and the person that everybody wanted finished first. It just seemed a bit despairing to me that they didn't finish second or third to the person that was chosen. So, I thank you all for listening, and again, I say, Counselor Baker and I both have been attending different board meetings to bring back good information to the city. At no time would we either go out and sell out our city, bring back bad information, or favor ACCG over somebody else, just because we serve on the board. We're there to serve our community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And Counselor Henderson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just very briefly, I, I'm gonna support the recommendation of staff, mainly because that's what we pay staff for, but I'll tell you, it's, I've been a little uneasy about this entire process. I, I feel, it's just me personally, I feel a little bit almost embarrassed about the way we handle things with ACCG, and I'm, I'm still a little uncomfortable with, in an era where we're privatizing and talk about privatization, we're compiling more and more responsibility in one area of our government, but we can't ignore the projected savings. So, because the staff has told us that they have full confidence in the realization of those savings, I'll support it on their recommendation, because they're the only ones we can hold accountable if, if, if we don't help them. So, that's why I'm gonna support it. If it were up to me, just on what I feel about the way this is going, I wouldn't be ready yet to vote to make this change, but on their recommendation, I will.
All right. Counselor Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I guess the bottom line is, I, I'm concerned about a change at this point. I'm, I'm not comfortable making a change. I, I'm on, I'm on opposing ordinance, or the, the item. But one thing I, I noticed in the description, Mr. City Manager, is that we talk about how much the city expends for workers' comp, but it's not in here how much the anticipated savings is. And I would like for that number to be made public. Also, I would like for us to identify whether or not this is going to be a growing department. If we make this change, are there gonna be additional employees required to work in the risk management office to handle some of these additional duties that I see coming? We're gonna be adding, we're gonna have to go outside and pick up some type of insurance contract for our workers' comp. I understand. If I'm wrong, please correct me, but what additional cost is that gonna add to the, to the overall charges that, that we're expending now, or the, the amount of monies that we're expending on workers' comp now? So, I, I'm not, I'm really not ready to vote, but if we're gonna push to a vote, I'm gonna have to oppose it for those reasons.
Okay. Well, and I can have Ann Marie to speak to the cost. I think on, whether it's ACCG or Amerisys, there's going to be insurance cost, and I think in her Q and A at the last session, she did share that information, and I've asked Liz to see if she can pull up that PowerPoint, because that's a question that was responded to. And so...
And the savings to...
And the savings as well, that was addressed, were addressed in, and I see that we've got it up. So, I, I'd ask you to go to those couple of slides to show the projected savings, and, and then I think you responded to the question of insurance.
Yes. Just give me a moment. Okay. Based upon the amounts that were presented in the RFP, the administrative savings this coming year will be approximately two hundred thousand dollars, and that's based on the actual bids that were received. Claimed savings will take longer, because what we will have are carryovers of the current claims, so those, we can't go backwards and re-manage those or, or reassign a care method. Those will carry on. But the, the best way that I could estimate early on savings from the beginning would be to say that with the managed care system, we get people to specialists faster, and therefore, we take away the delay, which costs both in terms of cost of medical care plus cost of time lost from work, and that if we took an average of maybe six weeks of primary care before we got them to the specialist, would save in the region of six thousand dollars per claim. So, for instance, in 2012, we had around about, and, don't hold me to these exact numbers, but around about three hundred and seventy-five new claims. If you said that even twenty-five percent of those spent six weeks with a care, a primary caregiver, and multiplied that by six thousand, you would see that kind of savings. So, that's kind of by an example. As time goes by and as we can improve the whole safety programs, which we've said from the beginning we need to do, it's, you know, two-sided thing, and then we bring the numbers down, the savings will keep increasing. But bear in mind, this will take time to get up and running. So, those were the best that I could do in terms of the immediate savings that we could see, because I knew you needed to see some kind of numbers for how we could proceed with new claims from day one.
Good. As we move forward, should this pass, as we move forward, would you be able to provide us updates on how we're going to arrive at the two hundred thousand dollars?
Yes.
And you're guaranteeing two hundred thousand in one year?
On the administrative costs? That's based on the, on the bids. That's what they submitted. So, and that, what that is...
What are we, what are we spending on the administrative side now?
Last, in this year, we spent four hundred and fifty-one thousand with ACCG. They stated in the RFP that to keep it the same, and this is not to include the MCO part, the nurse case management part of their, their bid, which they added on, they, they stated that we had the cost for their adjusting services, so we took the same figure, four hundred and fifty-one thousand. They, if we wanted a nurse case manager, one nurse case manager in addition, they would add a hundred and twenty-six thousand to that, and that's based on that bid. The Amerisys organization came in at, between, depending on how much nurse case management was involved, it came in at between a hundred and ninety thousand and two hundred and seven thousand, less than the four hundred and fifty-one. So, we rounded that to the two hundred thousand.
So, are you, you're comparing apples and apples to the expenses...
Yes.
...that are incurred by ACCG and Unisys?
Yes. And, and that was the only fair way to do it, because when the bids came in, they all were formed slightly differently. So, the way, the only way that we could be completely fair, or the evaluation committee could be completely fair, was they had me talk to them about what apples were apples and, and which ones were Macintosh and which were Granny Smith. And then, they took that and evaluated all of them, and that's what it came to, that the, they rounded it to the two hundred thousand dollar figure. And bear in mind that one of the reasons, one, one of the statements that had come back was about nurse case management. The nurse case manager with the ACCG bid would have to be in addition to the administrative cost, because it's subcontracted for ACCG, whereas nurse case managers are staff for Amerisys, and that's why we felt that that was, that was my initial recommendation, and the committee, and I was not obviously a deciding member on the committee, they also liked the idea of the nurse case manager, who are on staff and therefore are not an extra expense with the Amerisys contract.
And so, the overall timeline, excluding the admin costs, for, to realize savings is what?
Which savings?
Well, you, you identified savings from the admin, first year, two hundred thousand.
Right.
Okay. The additional savings...
And that's this year, twenty fourteen.
The additional savings, as we go through case management, a different approach to case management, what kind of timeline are we looking at to realize savings on that side?
We will start realizing savings on new claims immediately. It, it's difficult to quantify, because each case is different, but that's why I used that six thousand figure.
So, what you said earlier, the current cases, you cannot reassign those to Unisys. They have to play out through ACCG?
Not necessarily. ACCG, the administrative fee for a case, for a claim is paid the year of the injury. So, they have already been paid for existing claims. They could insist on carrying those claims through to the end, but they wouldn't earn themselves more money for doing that, and it would probably be easier to transfer those. There would be some, there could be, in some cases, some changes made in the, the handling if patients requested a change in physician or some, or some other change, then it would be handled differently. It would also... It would also be to the employees' benefit if they've been having issues to be able to talk to nurse case managers on an ongoing basis about their claims. And some of them, I mean, we get calls in the office with people wanting to discuss their claims, and I'm not a doctor. So it could help them if they could talk to nurse case managers on a more regular basis. Even the existing claims, we might be able to bring them further forward faster. And the mayor pretends completely correct. I mean, this is nothing, all along, we've been saying this is not about ACCG, it's about our size and our approach. So, you know, this is, this is why the recommendation was formed this way.
Okay. One of the questions I had too was, do you anticipate in need of additional staff in your office if we change this contract?
No.
Would you answer his question about insurance?
Oh, would we have to go outside for insurance?
Yes.
No. This is, basically, this is a change from one third-party administrator to another third-party administrator. So the, are you thinking of the excess insurance?
That's what I wanted you to speak to.
Okay. The excess insurance, I had, we've had this kind of back-and-forth discussion about the deductible. And as of yesterday, in the responses that I'd sent you, I'd said we hadn't had a quote from neither company at this point for excess. This morning, I received a quote from ACCG, which actually does show a higher premium if we retain the $450,000 deductible. If we move to $500,000, we would save almost $48,000 a year in premium. And I would say that ACCG itself is a nonprofit company, but they use Marsh, Inc. as their brokers to place their excess insurance, and that is definitely a commercial broker. And the insurance company that carries our excess coverage and has all along is a commercial insurance company and would probably be one of the ones that would be bidding under the Unisys-Amerisys account too.
So we don't have a bid yet on the insurance side?
No, but I expect it to come in pretty closely. Bear in mind that ACCG had all the information necessary to go and get it. We got, we are expecting one from Amerisys, but they will provide it information a lot later. But their ballpark bid that had come back in in May was actually in the same range that ACCG brought us today. So I expect an extremely similar bid because it'll be coming from the same insurance companies.
So you're expecting it to come in as high as ACCG's?
In the same area. Because this, the bid for next year's excess coverage is based on the figures from 2010 through '12. It takes into no account this year's, and next year's premium will be '11 through '13.
So it's a sliding scale going forward?
It's a sliding scale, yes. But they will, as we move on, hopefully, we will be showing you those savings. And I will be able to bring you reports, which will show, I will probably bring them to you in terms of old claims and new claims so that you can see how things are progressing with the claims going forward. Because I know you need to know that.
Would a quarterly report work with you if we ask you to provide us a quarterly report starting next year?
Quarterly reports?
Yes, ma'am.
I have no, of course. I work for you.
No problem. We will be happy to.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
And we have Counsel Barnes.
Ann Marie, from the, I can see it, from the healthcare perspective, I can see the savings immediately just from the movement from primary care providers to specialist care because that's where the cost is being bottlenecked at. Because there's a protracted period between the time that a person goes to the primary care physician and the time. And the fact that during that time, there is no healthcare professional that, we call it in the military, bird dogging.
Right.
Actually following that individual and making the healthcare decisions that are solely in the interest of rehabbing the patient and returning that person back to work. So I can, I'd wager to say that you would be able to start showing the implementation, the savings as soon as this system is implemented.
That's the plan.
That's the plan.
All right. Any further discussion on this item? We have a motion and second for approval on the City Manager's agenda of item 7C. Hearing none. C. All those in favor, please indicate yes by pressing green and no for, red for no. All right. And it's inconclusive. There's only five votes. All right. Thank you. Let's see. So we'll have to, what, Mr.?
Bring it back.
Bring it back or?
Bring it back on the third.
Okay. Hold on a second. Let me get to you. All right. Mr. City Attorney?
I have six against it.
What's that?
Now, you just have to bring it back on the third until we have conclusive one way or the other.
I see.
Pass or fail.
Sure.
And we'll certainly do that, Madam Mayor. We'll bring it back on the third and, and hopefully, we'll get a decision one way or the other. And of course, if the decision is not to support Amerisys, then we'll go back out with another RFP and go back through the entire process.
Okay.
And then we'll bring it back to the council after that next process.
All right. Mayor Pretend.
If we have to go back out, is council going to make the decision upfront that we want a managed care system before we go back out?
Well, council can.
Which, what should have been done before?
Yeah.
Because I don't, I mean, we go back out, I don't think it's going to be any different.
We can, we can do that, and all we can do is bring you the professional that we hired who has background and experience in this and offer you our best.
But however, and we've had discussions before, you can bring it.
Yeah.
But it's how and when is brought.
Sure. And so if we don't get a successful vote, then council can decide that they want to stay the course and, and we'll go back out with an RFP, but we will go back out and say that we do not want managed care or we do. And then we'll bring you the results back from that RFP. And...
Well, now, wait. I thought last time we didn't say that we did or we did not want. We just said we wanted this and to speak to these issues.
Exactly.
And they pitched their best effort.
That's right.
So we didn't direct them to go with a managed care or not managed care. We just said, these are the issues we want you to touch on and give us your best proposal.
That's exactly what we did. And I think staff made that clear when they made the presentation to council that we did not, we did exactly what you just said.
So you didn't, you as City Manager nor anybody else on the, on the RFP process directed them that the City of Columbus was changing to a managed care?
That's right.
But, but when we had the presentations from staff, all we heard was managed care, managed care, managed care. Now, if that's all we heard, I find it very difficult to believe that that's not what the vendors heard.
We can see if we can pull up the first presentation. We can, we can pull up the first presentation, which I think showed it in the slides, exactly what the RFP called for.
Yeah. And the other thing too, because we've been talking about this, again, we've been talking about ethics a lot tonight, but on a lot of different things, but one thing that we don't allow is once an RFP goes out, we don't allow directors to talk with the vendors. They have to go through that committee process. So I don't know that anybody was telling them what they wanted from them, or they certainly shouldn't have been because directors aren't supposed to be talking with applicants, except through the committee process that's in place. And that's one of our purchasing requirements in the RFP.
Well, and I think, Madam Mayor, the bottom line is, council can decide what they think they want or what the staff recommends, and we'll go back out with what you think you want, and we'll come back with the top vendor. And we'll see who that vendor will be. And, and then we'll go from there because we're going to be guided by your direction. If you, if you're set on what you want, you, you know, tell us, and that's what we'll go for, and, and we'll have our staff work within what you're looking for.
Okay.
Might not get the savings that we think we can get otherwise, but we'll, we'll be guided by your direction.
Okay. Come on back next week then, and we'll see what we've got.
I'll do that.
All right. Thank you. Is there anything else on your agenda?
I've got a monthly update from the finance director for October.
This is the October monthly update. For the other local option sales tax in total for the first three months, collected $8,368,000. And the report indicates how each department has spent the funds for the other local option sales tax. I've also included on the infrastructure, all the projects and the existing balance remaining in those projects that we're able to fund from the 30% infrastructure. On the monthly report for the operating funds, the general fund is down slightly compared to last year at .76%. And just to notate, on the local option sales tax, it's in the general fund, down 6.39% over the first three years. We received October's distribution today, and it is down 9.13% compared to October of last year. So we're still continuing to see a decline in our local option sales tax month after month. On the stormwater fund and on the paving fund, down 8.82% and 9.15%, but we're still tracking on budget on where we expect to be in those two funds. Medical center is down 10.65%. And as we move through October and November and December, we're receiving distributions from the Tax Commissioner's Office on taxes, and that's, the majority of these funds are funded by taxes. We'll continue to see distributions from the Tax Commissioner on those funds. Integrated waste up 3.18%. E-911 is up 33.93%. Remember, last year, we received prepaid wireless. They're now required to make an E-911 fee on prepaid wireless. Last year, that payment was $134,000, and it was just implemented last year. Our payment, which is an annual payment, this year was $354,000. So we did see an increase in distribution on prepaid wireless. Economic Development Fund up 40.60%. And again, the millage rate last year was .25, this year's .41, so we did expect to see that kind of an increase this year. Debt Service Fund down 13%. Transportation Metro Fund down 11.93%. Parking Management Fund up slightly, $7,000 at 12%. Trade Center Fund up 35%. And that, again, with the Trade Center Fund, revenues at $756,000 and expenditures at $765,000. So their events are tracking along with their revenue. Bull Creek is down 7.56%, but again, with Bull Creek, revenues at $444,000 and expenditures at $450,000. So they're almost breaking even at Bull Creek. Oxbow is down 12.80%. And the Civic Center is up slightly at 1.5%. And we've talked about insurance quite a bit over the last few months, but insurance revenues are tracking about the same, down .7%. Expenditures are at $8.5 million right now. At the end of October, we had a $1358,000 deficit between revenues and expenditures in the health insurance fund. On the, I've also included, given you a running total related to cash and fund balance that I've included in your report. And in the T-SLOSS revenue, our distributions for September, $194,000 this month. So we're still continuing to track down from the original projections of $3 million. We're closer to 2.4, 2.5 each year. And I've started to include, we have started making expenditures on the projects related to the Riverwalk particularly at this point, and we have not spent any of the discretionary funds to date. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. We've got, one second, we've got Counsel Baker.
Would you repeat what you said about the sales tax collections? You mentioned a percentage.
Sales tax, for the first three months, in the original local option sales tax is down 6.39% compared to last year. We received October's distribution today, and compared to October last year, we're down 9.13% just for that month. So we're continuing to track less than last year.
Is there a number on here that shows the variance from our estimated, from the estimated budget for the current year? Is there a?
If you look at page two of 15 on the...
Maybe that's why. I didn't realize there were 15 pages.
Operating funds, we budgeted 35.8.
Right.
And we've collected 23.48% of that budget. So just short of 25% after three months, which is where we expect to be. So we're a little behind budget after the first three months at 23.48 as opposed to 25%.
So, okay. Okay. Well, there's nothing to say. It's just, it is, okay. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Thomas.
Ms. Hodge, I've had several people over the last, sometime, say to me, why don't we ever get a report on the loss funds? I said, we get a report every month. And, well, where is it? And I say, in the council packet, and I'll be glad to share it with you, is there someplace where the citizen out there can go and see the report, particularly the lost is the one that I, the O-Lost, O-Lost is the one that I get, ask about regularly?
All of these reports are posted on ECAP. So if they went to the council agenda packet, they would see each one of these reports on ECAP.
So that the citizen out there that's looking can get to ECAP?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Okay. So...
Now, if there's anyone that wants the report directly, I mean, they're in PDF format, and I'll be happy to email it to anyone if they want to contact me.
I just need a place to direct them when they ask me that question. Thank you.
So they can call the finance department, and I'll be happy to send it, or they can go to ECAP and get that information.
And, and you can go back months and months and months. So what you do is you go under the City Manager's Agenda, and then you drop down to Finance Monthly Report, and you click on that, and you will see breakouts for October, like, for instance, this month, October O-Lost, O-Lost Infrastructure Projects, October 13, monthly revenue report, cash balance, T-SLOSS, T-SLOSS projects. So it's, it's actually broken down by individual reports of all different kinds of revenue we receive. And you can go back, I'm looking here, you know, each, each month and get it. So Counselor Davis?
I was, well, for the rest of the council, the mayor and I were just having a conversation. I asked her the possibility without cost, the possibility of maybe CSU or somebody just looking into what this trend is. Because I mean, you, we need to be able to identify, this has been happening for a while, and it's a continuous trend, so there's got to be some contributing factors. And I think it would be very wise to understand what is happening in our community because you can't really prepare going year to year. You're going to have to understand if this is going to be an ongoing trend. And if we can identify it, that would really help. I just don't think that you can just say, oh, we're having an off year.
Right.
Not with what's happening at this point. And certainly, you know, everybody's expecting a great holiday season. I don't know this, but, you know, that in itself could have a tremendous impact. But I would, I would think that we would want to try to... But I would think that we would want to try to understand this matter that we're dealing with a little, little closer.
And some of the information
I can only speculate, personally, I can only speculate to why, you know, bottom lines, people are not spending. I think that's what you're telling us.
Right, and some of, we do get some commodity information from Department of Revenue, but it's in very broad categories. So we can see, obviously, we're expecting auto to decline because of the change in the title of the LORAM tax. So we do expect to see something, but what we're seeing is more than what we're actually seeing in the reduction in that particular commodity. But what's interesting is, when you look at our occupation tax, which is based on gross receipts as well, we're not seeing this same trend that we're seeing with the local option sales tax. So I welcome anyone that can provide any input into trends that they're seeing in our community.
Two interesting points, and Counselor Davis and I were talking about it, and I agree with them, anything that we can get is good information. Two random points is the Revenue Commissioner stated to us that the state sales tax is down too. Not their revenues overall, but their state sales tax is down too. He also pointed out that there's been some state law changes that continue to constrict, well, excuse me, expand exemptions and restrict revenues, particularly to municipalities. And that's happening at the state level. And you mentioned one with the Ad Valorem related to autos. That's going to obviously affect us. And then one thing that I was surprised to see that I passed on to council, and it's in your packs if you didn't get it, in mail, but in email, but the U.S. Conference of Mayors did a gross metropolitan product study of, I think, twelve-hundred or thirteen-hundred cities, and Columbus was one of them. And we had positive GMP for two thousand and eleven. We had stagnant GMP for two thousand and twelve, and projected to have stagnant again in two thousand and thirteen, and was projected for two thousand and fourteen to step up some. So I thought that was interesting, because that did correlate, for whatever it's worth, I mean, these are macro numbers, obviously. But for whatever it's worth, that particular analysis corresponded to our sales tax results. So there's something there. I don't know what it is, but someone could probably look at it and shake it out for us a little bit more. Mayor, Mayor Prutin?
I'm not sure they can really get the information we need, since the state won't give us information that's sent to them by our own local providers, vendors. And I was wondering, when a store here sends up sales tax information, do they not keep part, keep a copy of what actually goes into the state?
Does the, does the local business keep, you mean, keep the records or keep some money?
No, not the money.
Okay.
The report that they send to the state.
I'm sure I do.
For tax purposes, Counselor Baker?
Make, keep up a file copy or give them a file copy. Or if it's software-based, you can log on to the Department of Revenue's website now and pull up the last, you know, two or three years, copies that you, the information about what's been filed the last two or three years. Their web-based system has been improved substantial last few years.
So that means?
So the answer is yes, you can, you can get that.
If we wanted to verify that we were getting back what we sent up, that's the only way we would be able to do it. They would have to do it from scratch by checking with each provider or service.
That, well, that would be almost impossible to do, yeah.
It'd be voluntary.
That's right, because the state hasn't gotten over this bridge yet that some of this information could be, you know, private information not to be released.
I know, I know the state has that attitude about it. But the sad part about it is, you don't know that you're really getting what's being produced in your community. You have no one knowing.
No, and I agree with that, you don't.
And you look at all the restaurants that have opened up, and the stores downtown.
Well, right. There are a lot of thoughts to that, though. When you read some studies on communities our size, as you saw the stats on our population holding steady, it's that, when you see a new business or a new strip center opening up, they're not necessarily generating new revenue. They're taking it from somewhere else. So it's the same dollars that are getting shifted around. And I think that's what we're starting to see. The other thing, and I know we're all ready to go home, I'm below this point, but the other thing, to the exemption, this is the first year, you know, when you pay your power bill, there's, look on it, it's sales tax. Well, now, this is the first year manufacturers were exempt. So as they began to turn on their air conditioners to cool the plants or whatever, all that energy was no longer subject to sales tax. This, and this is the first year of that. So this is the first year we feel that impact, but that's not going to change. I don't, you know, that was highly touted by all of the economic development authorities, so I don't see that reversing. So every time we can get a step forward, we take two steps back with something that's out of our, out of our control. And when you look at like a downtown area, when you, when you think about the dollar volume it takes to move the needle on the numbers that the Finance Director presents, it's not a couple of million dollars in sales. It's five, ten million dollars that's even going to move the numbers on her chart. I mean, the volume takes, when you talk about the two percent we get, it takes a lot of volume to move those numbers. And I think Counselor Davis is right, so much money was, has been sucked out during the recession. It's just not come back yet. And you read that, you know, back-to-school shopping used to be huge. The numbers I read, that is trending off. In addition to, as there now, people take advantage of tax-free back-to-school shopping, which hurts. So everywhere we turn, you know, we hit, we hit an obstacle, so.
I think those are very great points.
So that six million dollar shortfall that we're looking at now is just going to continue to grow?
Could, I mean, we, we always say we hope it's going, we hope it doesn't grow. We hope it at least levels off, but, and then the next point of discussion is maybe this, maybe this is the new norm. And if that's the case, then we may be faced with, let's just say, a penny collects thirty-six million, five hundred thousand a year, and now it's thirty-five million a year, then, then maybe we have to write the size and cost of our government down to what the sales tax is bringing in instead of what, where we want it to be. I mean, those are just conversations we're going to have to have.
That's such an excellent point. And I think that's why, as we're sitting here, trying to, just to share a little bit, what I've asked the staff to do is come back to council with millions of dollars in savings that don't impact services and don't impact jobs. Now, those things may not pass, you know, because it takes six votes, and as, as we saw, we, you know, have trouble getting them on some of these issues. And if those things don't pass, those administrative costs that don't impact jobs and don't impact services don't pass, then we will have to retool the size of the government to either cut back on services, or, or reduce jobs, or in some other way, retool to meet what looks like a new norm. And I think also the excellent point that Counselor Baker made is, in order to recoup this million, million and a half, whatever it's going to end up being, that we're seeing, we're downtrending, would take, you know, a pretty large population influx or job influx. Not just a thousand jobs here and a thousand jobs there. I think it would take very significant job increases, very significant population increases, or people migrating here sort of en masse from our surrounding counties to come to our Whitewater, which is what we're hoping will happen. But it's going to have to be really significant to make up the kind of downtrend we've seen in the sales tax. Counselor Davis?
Well, and this is a very, very interesting conversation. And, you know, when you really look at it from a, from a bigger perspective, you know, we are somewhat of a transit community. And we rely a lot on retail sales. I mean, we rely on pennies, when you really look at it. And when you rely on retail sales and pennies, and you're dependent on multifamily, and you don't have that residential home base, or you've lost that, then, you know, you, the conversation needs to come up, has to come up. You're, you're sitting in the same place every year, unless you really start having the conversation of, how can we, how can we come up with a solution? And, you know, there's people way smarter than me that can figure it out. But really, you're talking tax reform. You're talking about reforming and developing a whole new structure of how you, how you generate revenue. And, you know, we're having this conversation today, but let me tell you what, when I'm gone and we're all gone, if you haven't had this conversation the next ten, fifteen, twenty years, where is, the question is, where's Columbus going to be? You know, if you're dealing with this every year, if this is going to be the norm. And, you know, Columbus can only, you know, we can only support so much from that standpoint. So I think, and having, this is not a, this is a conversation that needs to continue for a long time. And, you know, the leaders in our community, and our community needs to have, start having this conversation. It may be the conversation we need to start communicating to our state representatives in reality. I know they're dealing with some of these things up there, but you look at other states and other communities, and they've made some changes that have significantly helped out, so.
All right, thank you. Great conversation. We will continue to, to have it. And with that, we'll move into the Clerk's Agenda.
Madam Mayor, members of council, on the Clerk's Agenda, Items One, Two, and Three are information for the Mayor and Council.
Okay, we've got a motion and second to approve Items Four and Five. All those in favor, please state aye. Okay, we've got motion and second that the letters be received with regrets. All those in favor, please state aye. We've got a motion and second. Oh, excuse me, hold on a second, hold on a second. We've got six. Okay, six and seven's not a, not a resignation, so we'll have to, so we'll.
Was the motion to receive the letters?
Okay, just to receive. Okay, so a motion to receive the letters, and so that passed, okay. But now, as a point of informational update, the Tax Commissioner cannot be here this evening. Thankfully, she couldn't be here this evening, or she'd been here for four and a half hours. But, but, and would ask that we bring this back next time for consideration. So we've received it, and we'll get it to, yeah, okay. We'll get it to her now, and she can investigate this and get back with us on a, on a position, and we can discuss it at a future meeting. All right, with that clarification, we're at Item Eight on the Clerk's Agenda. The minutes of the following boards. We've got a motion and second to receive the minutes. All those in favor, please state aye. Okay? Okay, we've got a motion and second to add on resolution excusing Counselor McDaniel. All those in favor, please state aye. Okay?
Want to continue on? On the board appointments, on the Board of Health, Dr. William DeNemer does not wish to serve again. Dr. Carlos Wise has been nominated. He can be confirmed.
Okay, motion and second for confirmation. All those in favor, please state aye.
On our Board of Tax Assessors, Ms. Patricia Hunter, she's eligible and can serve again. We'll bring this back for.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Henderson?
Yeah, I've got another nominee, Mr. Lawton Grantham. I think he'd served on that board before, but he's been off about two years. He had, I had told him I'd nominate him at the next opening. I don't know that he's going to want to run against a sitting member. I'll follow up with him and get back. But right now, I'd like to place his name, and I'll get you his resume. I've got it. Ma'am?
Late night heckling.
Just recently, when he was eligible for, for re-upping. And us guys got to stick together, too.
All right, we're moving on. It's all great conversation. Madam Clerk?
On the Convention and Visitors Board of Commissioners.
Okay, we've got a motion and second to approve Pino Wells Davis. All those in favor, please state aye.
Are we confirming all of them or just Ms. Davis?
Uh, okay. Okay, Hamilton and Pierce, is there a second? All those in favor, please state aye. Okay?
On the Board of Honor, Mr. Jack Rogers does not wish to serve again. On our Civic Center Advisory Board, Ms. Addie Cunningham has resigned. This is Council District Three's representative. On our Circle Commission, Mr. Owen Digfield has resigned. Will need a new recommendation for that seat. On the Medical Center Hospital Authority, the seat, Mr. Michael Eddings, as well as Mr. Robert Kuhn, will expire on December thirty-first. Council will need to submit three nominees for each of these seats. On our Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission.
Okay, we've got Counselor Thomas.
For this, the position currently held by Mr. Michael Eddings, I would nominate Ms., is it Rashmi? Hudson, Mr. Murray Solomon, and Mr. C. Robert Kuhn.
Okay.
Robert Kuhn.
We will forward these names over to the authority for them to select someone.
I'm sorry, Ms. Washington, did you get that we want to do the same with the other seat?
I did, and we will forward these names over to the authority. On the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, Mr. Juan Rodriguez is being recommended by the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission to succeed.
Yeah, we've got a motion and second for approval. All those in favor, please state aye. Since it's their recommendation, do we have to bring it back?
No, we don't.
No, okay.
On our Public Safety Advisory Commission, District Five, Mr. Andrew Holloman's seat has been declared vacant. Mr. Daniel Williams, who represents Council District One, cannot succeed himself. Will need a replacement for that seat. As well as Ms. Margaret Schaefer, who represents Council District Seven.
Do you know if they have any recommendations?
I'll have to check with them. On our Region Six Planning Board, Ms. Elizabeth Matheny has resigned. Will need a replacement for this seat. And on our Taxicab Commission, Mr. Michael Donnelly has resigned. We are in contact with the hotel motel industry, and there will have a recommendation for us, hopefully, at our next meeting. On our Youth Advisory Council, Counselor District Two will need a nominee for that seat. And that's all I have.
All right, great. We have a request from the city, from the city attorney to have a short executive session on matters of litigation. If I could get a motion? Okay, that's a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. All right, we're in executive session. Please clear the chamber. Thank you. All right, we are out of an executive session on litigation matters. No votes were taken, and at this time, I want to recognize the city attorney. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a resolution on the table that would settle the case of GeorgiaCarey.org v. Baldwin, pending in federal court for a total payment of fifteen thousand dollars. We'd like to get a motion on that.
We've got a motion and a second for approval. Any questions regarding this matter? Seeing that there's none, all those in favor, please state aye. Are there any opposed? All right, Mr. City Attorney, anything else?
Just, I know our media's been here a long time waiting. There are no, no approval for a settlement of any other matter has been voted on or will be voted on at this time.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'll entertain, well, let me first say, I want to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving, and appreciate everybody's patience during this long but productive meeting. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, all in favor, please state aye. All right, y'all have a happy Thanksgiving. We'll see you next week.